Call the meeting to order. First item is a bit of a moment of silence for George Downsborough. He was a Patton Township supervisor for a number of years, an excellent contributor, and then was our representative to the airport authority. And he lost a battle with cancer this past week. So a moment of silence. Now the pledge to the flag.
I would like to testify that the United States of America, and to your republic for which it stands, one nation under our, in the desert where liberty and justice are.
And now Pam Rob will has a resolution to offer.
Good evening. The resolution is 2023-21. It's a resolution of the township of Patton Central County, Pennsylvania, recognizing the celebration, celebrating veterans on Veterans Day and honoring all veterans, servicemen and servicewomen. Whereas the brave men and women of the Army, Navy, Air Force, Marines, Coast Guard, and Reservists demonstrate a resolute, selfless, and courageous spirit that is unmatched, reminding us of their sacrifices that they were, that were and are given today to ensure our country's many freedoms. And whereas Veterans Day provides an opportunity for Patton Township to honor the service of all veterans and their families with the recognition of service. And whereas on November the 11th, we will remember those veterans who have made the ultimate sacrifice. And those service will be, and their service will be remembered by Patton Township. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Patton Township Board of Supervisors, on November the 11th, we honor all veterans and their families and offer Patton Township sincere recognition and appreciation of their immeasurable service. Resolved on the 8th day of November 2023 from the Patton Township Board of Supervisors. Thank you.
So you've made a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously. Okay, now we're up to, okay, we also have a, we also want to commemorate the Hindu festival. We'll do that right after the, oh, we'll do that now. Would someone like to read this one?
It's just that the Hindu festival, Diwali, will be celebrated on November 12th. And there was a link with more information on what Diwali is. It's a celebration of like, from what I read.
Thank you.
Okay. Does anyone have any suggested additions to the agenda? Anyone have any suggested subtractions from the agenda? Oh, no, that's not here. Okay, we're up to public comments then. If anyone has a comment about something that's not on the agenda, now's the time to tell us about it. Otherwise, wait till that part of the meeting where we're talking about that issue. Do we have any, do we have any comments? I don't see anyone. Is there a hand raised?
No.
Okay. In that case, we'll move right ahead to presentation, presentation's public hearing. And we have the, we talked about the Veterans Day recognition. And we're up to number four. Proposed 2024 Township budget presentation. And we're going to be talking about what might be fiscally possible.
Yes, we are. All right, I'll take this one, Amy, if you don't mind. Okay, so this is our, beginning of our budget presentation for the 2024 budget. Tonight, we're going to do a presentation and work session. On November 15th, we will have the tentative adoption of the budget. And on December 13th, we'll hold a public hearing and the final adoption of the CIP and the 2024 budget. So we'll start with a look at last year and what we did and what we accomplished. We had, we started our improvements on Atherton Street at the entrance to Patton Crossing. We started work on phase two of the Burnell Road Park. We started design work for Cricklewood Drive pedestrian upgrades. We did some spongy moss spraying in the park forest area. And we started on the Atherton Signal Coordination Project. The 2023 budget showed revenues of $14,780,000 and expenditures of $16,367,000. Were projected to come in $12,296 in revenues and $13,547,000 in expenditures. That shows savings in, or deficit of revenue of 2.48 million and a savings in expenditures of 2.82 million. And the revenue came in 16.8% below budget and the expenditures came in at 17.23 above budget. Below budget, I'm sorry. And the reason for those.
There's a question. I don't know if people following on Zoom are, my stuff is not shifting with.
Oh, it doesn't play well with PowerPoint sometimes.
Oh, you're not seeing it on Zoom?
No.
We just see the. We see the CNET projection, not the PowerPoint.
Can you see it now?
Yeah.
Yeah, but we can, we can see your notes.
No, that's a, there's no notes. You can see that.
Okay.
I don't know how to get rid of that because.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm not sure how to get rid of that.
Did everybody see if there's watching on Zoom?
Yeah, SWAT presenter, yeah.
How about that? Is that better?
Yeah.
What are you seeing on yours?
Yeah, we're seeing that now.
It doesn't advance all the time, that's the problem.
Okay, well, let's see. The main reason for the decrease in revenue and the decrease in expenditures is grants and projects that have been deferred to 2024. Okay, so can you? Is it, did it move? Okay. So in 2023, we replaced one patrol vehicle. We purchased a new patrol vehicle for the K-9 unit. We replaced a 17,000 gross vehicle weight truck and a one-man leaf truck. We accrued, we had accrued compensated absences payouts due to separations, the major one being the manager who left. And we did, we overlaid Canterbury Drive, Wooded Way, and Top Trees Avenue. The 2024 tax rates. So in this proposed budget that I'm presenting, I have put a four tenths of a mil increase of real estate taxes. That would increase our real estate taxes from 8.9 to 9.3. Six tenths of a mil is for open space preservation to pay the note, that's from the 2016 referendum. Our earned income taxes, a half a percent. Our local services tax is $52. And our real estate transfer tax is a half a percent. And those last three, earned income tax, local services tax, and real estate transfer tax are the maximum rate where, that were permitted by state law. This is a graph that shows our tax rates. And this shows our tax rate, which is combined with the six tenths of a mil of open space. So our tax, our actual tax rate, real estate tax, has not increased since 2012. In 2012, it went from 8.7 to 8.9. There is that increase of six tenths of a mil in 2016, but that was due to the referendum. So was a tax increase that was agreed to by the voters. So this is the first increase that we've had in 12 years. This is a graph that shows the taxes versus, the taxes rate versus inflation. So the green line is inflation and the blue line, which has the flat, that is, is our tax rate. So you can see that we have not been keeping up with inflation. We're still not going to keep up with inflation, but that's okay. We, our organic growth helped us to offset some of that inflation, but now we're, we've, we brought our, our fund balance down to the level that we're going to have to do an increase. So let's talk about the 2024 budget revenues. So our real estate taxes are revenue, our budget is 5.765 million. The tax on the open space is 367,000. Our earned income taxes are 2.8 million. Our other taxes are 800,000. Our intergovernmental payments, which are grants and such, are $4.8 million and our non-taxable sources of 927,000. For a total revenue budget of $15,499,287. In the non-tax revenue, $144,664 are from assessments, that's streetlights and, and fire hydrant assessments. Our licensing permits, health permits, our licenses are $313,000. Fines of $50,000, interest of $15,000, departmental earnings of $162,344. Penn State fees in lieu of taxes is $47,356. Rental income of 37,683 and miscellaneous of 156,393. The department, departmental earnings are going up because of our engineer that we're hiring as a, an outside service. And then we get to charge, what she's charging us back to the people that send in the plans. So you'll see that outside services in engineering, planning, and zoning has gone up and this number has gone up to offset it. Okay, so our revenue by source shows that real estate taxes is 37% of our total revenue. 20% is from grants and intergovernmental payments. 11% is pass-through grants, which are grants we're getting and paying directly back on. So it's in, in and out. And 18% is from our earned income tax. Our expenditures. General government services, which is administration and building, is $1.784 million. Our police is $4,131,000. Our public works are $6,120,000. Engineering, planning, and zoning, parks and rec, are $1,930,000. Our community service other is $1,397,000. Our debt service is $788,512. And our debt service on open space is $245,435. For a total expenditures of $16,396,480. And I just noticed I forgot to back out of the individual lines, the COG, but I did for the graph. And we'll talk about the COG later. Okay, so our personnel costs and benefits for 2024, this again, a mistake. It's 4.3% COLA for the non-uniform employees. That was 6.3% in 2023, 4% in 2022, and 1.7% in 2021. Non-uniform employees get a 1.25% merit increase on their anniversary date. The police, per their contract, are in their second year. Last year, they got a 6% increase. This is their second year, they're getting a 5% increase in 2024. They'll get 4% in 2025 and 2026, which is the last two years of their four-year contract. Our health insurance costs are going up 13%, of which the employees contribute to their health insurance. The non-uniform employees contribute 12% and the uniform employees contribute 9%. So I wanted to show you the difference in wages and benefits for each of the different items, general government, police, public works, and engineering. Engineering, planning, and zoning looks odd, but we don't have a engineer on staff. We had an engineer for part of 2023. We have no engineer for 2024. So that's why there is a decrease in their wages. So our total wages and benefits for 2023 was $5,756,717. For 2024, it's $6,178,190 for a difference of $421,473. And that equates to 6.85 tenths of a mil, .685 mils. Okay, so that's higher than what the, the tax increase that I'm proposing is. Center Region Council of Governments in 2023, their total was $1,819,587. It's gone up $203,167 to a total of $2,022,754. And that equates to .33 mils. So that's almost our entire tax increase. So it's hard to see this, but if you look at that, police is 25% of our budget. General government is 10%. Public works is 27%. Engineering, planning, and zoning, parks and rec is 5%. COG is 12%. There's 11% for the pass-through grants, which is a plus or minus. And our total debt service with open space is 6%. So our summary of the budget is, as I showed before, the $15,499,000 in revenues, the $16,396,000 expenditures for a decrease in fund balance of $897,193 and a year-end cash balance of $1,332,387, which equals 8.13% of our operating expenditures. And as you know, our policy is to be between 8 and 12%. So we're right on the low end of that policy of 8%. This is a breakdown of our millage 2023 versus 2024. You can see our general millage going from 6.2 to 6.6, which is that four tenths of a mil increase. Our debt remaining at 1.2 mils. Our open space preservation millage remaining at six tenths of a mil. Our library percentage remaining at four tenths of a mil. Park capital improvements of seven tenths of a mil. And our fire remaining at four tenths of a mil. So our total going from 9.5 mils up to 9.9 mils. So that was our presentation and we could talk, answer questions and go through the work session. Next week will be our tentative adoption. And December 13th will be our public hearing and final adoption of the CIP and the 2023 budget. Speaking of the CIP, and I hope I'm not going to jump ahead here, but, but I went back to the CIP because, you know, when I presented the CIP, I talked about not having all the numbers and wasn't sure whether we could get away without a tax increase. I went back and I revised the CIP. We moved some projects. We did some things in the CIP that have reflected in this budget. So I revised the CIP and I'll bring it back next week, the revised copy of it, and we could talk about what changes were made before we adopt the final CIP in December. All right, so that leaves us to go to the next presentation.
Just police. We split it up this year. So Larry's doing the introduction, then we'll have the police budget, then I'll do public works, parks, and engineering, planning, and zoning. So if you want to save all your questions for the end, and then we can go through them and, Dan, I appreciate it getting your list because I incorporated that into the public works presentation. Unless you have specific questions for Larry you want to ask and have, that's also fine.
Yeah. How do you want to handle it? Do you want to ask?
It might be helpful to ask questions after each presentation.
Okay, sure. So let's, let's talk about the overall presentation of the budget. And does anybody have any questions?
I shouldn't have answered this, but forgotten. How long has the debt service on the open space lasted?
It was 10 years and we're in, so another six more years.
Anyone else with a question? Doesn't mean you can't ask a question later.
Thanks for that presentation.
You're welcome.
You had displayed a breakdown of revenue streams.
Yes.
Pie chart. And I guess I just had a curiosity of whether that proportionally seems like a good breakdown of where those funding streams are coming from. Is there like a model?
That is, so it is relative to the other townships that I've looked at. You know, obviously, most of our, our, our revenue comes from real estate taxes. So, yeah, I know. Most of it comes from real estate taxes, so, so that's, that's normal. It, for 37% of our income to come from real estate taxes and 20-some percent to come from earned income taxes, that's, that is consistent with other municipalities in the state.
And part of the problem is the state hasn't given us the ability to raise our earned income tax. So if the state were to address that, which they're looking at, they're trying to, the municipal league and others have talked about trying to get something passed because they have a initiative they're doing called it not 1965 anymore, because that's the last time these taxes were all looked at. So that's why you're seeing a push to try to get this addressed.
Yes.
Just to follow up on that, some time may not be aware, we're, we're operating, our township operates, we're in the last township code.
Yeah, I'm sorry, that was my fault.
We have, Urson Township has moved to something called home rule. And under home rule, they are not restricted to a maximum on what they can charge earning them taxes. So that township, the citizens in that township pay a higher percentage of their tax, their earned income is taxed at a higher percent than ours, because they're able to do that. And therefore, they can hold down tax increases on their real estate in their township. So that's one of the advantages in terms of flexibility for revenue under the home rule charter.
Sounds like it's also more progressive.
Yes, it is.
It is, yeah.
Yeah, I know we've talked just in passing about that. I know it's quite a challenge to do it, but maybe we should revisit that.
The home rule process itself is a pretty lengthy process because you have to actually appoint a study committee and you go through a year-long process to figure out if you want to be home rule or not. College Township is a home rule alternate community. So their only home rule in that they got rid of the elected tax collector position. So they have a college township council, but for everything else, they follow the second class township code. Probably the easier process and something that hopefully now we have some folks, the lieutenant governor came from a local government background, we have some folks that understand local government at the state level, is to push to get the ability to raise these taxes if we want to. And you know, I think when it's been discussed in the past, it's been discussed, like even if you said you can't raise your real estate and your earned income in the same year, municipalities would be fine with that because then you could, real estate taxes hits everybody, not everybody pays earned income tax. If you're retired, your tax, your income is not taxable at the local level in Pennsylvania. So it's kind of a regressive tax in that the, the real estate hits everybody.
So you're still waiting for the legislature?
Yeah, I mean, if you want, I think years ago, I know I have the book upstairs, so I, I think that years ago, it was looked at or discussed in Patton Township. I think Tom Kurtz might have been here then. But certainly, if you guys want to look into it, we can certainly find more information for you. I just know because of the study commission that you have to put together, it is a lengthy process. There's a lot of public involvement, which there should be, but it is, it's not a fast fix.
Well, neither is waiting for.
Yeah, the legislature is not exactly a fast fix either.
Thank you. So expenditure, based on the expenditures, you had mentioned essentially that equals sort of like one mil.
Yes. So, so the, yeah, so the COG plus the, the wages and benefits with total one mil, yeah.
And you're asking for an increase in .4 mil.
That's correct.
I understand that, that, what do you call it, the end, the fund balance at the end of the year would be like 1. something mil.
Yeah, 1.3 million dollars, yeah.
But that would be, situate us on eight point, the low end, 8-point something percent of where we established needs to be between that 8 and 12%.
Yes.
The fund balance at the end.
Yes.
And so this .4 mil would situate, situate us at the bottom realm of that, that, that range.
Right.
Costs are probably still going to increase next year, especially if we're adding positions and inflation. Costs are probably still going to increase next year, especially if we're adding positions and inflation and stuff like that. So I forget if we said this, but would you be coming back then to ask for another tax increase?
I hope not. So, so based on, you know, the work that I'm doing on the revised CIP, that it would be a build of the fund balance over a, a four or five year to bring it back up more in, in line with the eight to twelve, higher than the eight, but less than the twelve, probably more like a ten and a half to eleven percent. So instead of doing it all in one year and getting all that money in one year, and then next year we talk about decreasing taxes again, it's more of, let's do four tenths of a mill, and, and that will, that will over time bring our, our fund balance back up to where it should be.
So we're taking a pretty conservative approach to taxes, levying?
Yes.
Taxes.
Yes. So, you know, barring any, you know, ten percent inflation, which I can't tell you whether inflation's going to be ten percent for two thousand and twenty-four, and borrow any, any major changes, I don't think we're planning on really adding any, any staff. I think that, that probably the four tenths of a mill that we're doing this year can hold us for, for a number of years, for the four or five years that I'm looking at.
Okay, so it seems unlikely based on projections that
Yes.
we, you would be coming back next year and two years saying, we, we need another, telling our citizens that we need another tax increase.
Unlikely, but not unheard of.
Okay.
Okay.
Just to follow up on that string, in another four to five years, we bring the fund balance up to where we want it.
Right.
We're also going to be looking at the end of the debt service on open space, and that would free a five, point five mills.
Yes.
Point six.
That would bring, bring up that point, that six tenths of a mill, which, yeah.
So, but what do we do then? Do we, I, I know the last time we actually asked for it to be renewed, and citizens supported it.
Right. I mean, that's, that's up to the board in, in six years.
Yeah, that's a conversation we'll need to have.
And we certainly have to do something in that, in that time.
Right.
Okay, we haven't gotten the question yet, but let's say we had gotten the question, why do we need the fund balance at all? Because one could say, let the taxpayers keep their money until we need it.
Good question. That's an excellent question, Mr. Chair. The reason we need that fund balance, because that fund balance is a snapshot of the fund balance on December thirty-first, okay? However, we won't be getting our tax, our real estate tax, in, our, our real estate tax income won't come in until April. So the reason why it's an eight to twelve percent of expenditures is that covers us for three to four months while we're waiting for the revenue to come in from real estate taxes. So real estate taxes, we get it in, in March, April, May, most of it comes in in March and April. Then we, that has to hold us over until next March, April, May, so it's not really working on a calendar year. It's working on a fiscal year of, let's say, April first to April first. The, the earned income tax income that comes in, which is, as we showed, is like twenty percent of our revenue, it comes in relatively even on a monthly basis, though it spikes up at the end of the quarter when people pay their quarterly estimates and such like that, so there's a little spike at the end of the quarter. But that comes in over time, but that's only twenty percent of the amount that we need. So we need to have part of, part of the money from, from real estate taxes to cover us, to pay our payroll, our expenses that occur in the first quarter of the new year.
We also get billed by the cog in the first quarter of the year, and that was a conversation piece a couple of years ago, many years ago, with all the municipalities, because the bills used to be due like February first, and we were all like, we don't have any money February first. So they pushed the bills back a little bit, but the cog needs money obviously to operate on their own, so.
Yeah, they need the money too.
It's, it's a double-edged sword because we basically, it's cash flow for us, right? It's a cash management issue for us. Without having a fund balance, we would be in a world of hurt trying to pay our bills. We'd have to take out, they have tax anticipate, anticipatory notes that you take out, and then you pay back when you get your real estate taxes, and it's a no, no-win game when you have to do that.
Yeah, so, so I think the way that we have handled it, at least since I have been employed at the township, is taken the position that we're trying to let the taxpayers keep the money in their bank as long as, until we absolutely need it. But I think we've hit the year where we absolutely need it. Because as Amy could tell you, it's, it's a weekly conversation in our office about cash management. You know, payroll's coming up, what money's coming in, what money's going out, so that we can, we can, you know, it's, it's not that we have a lot of cash sitting in the bank that we're, we're.
A follow-on question then would be, would it make more sense if we had a fiscal year that started on April first?
I don't know that we're allowed by law to do that.
However, or are we not allowed to do that?
Yeah, I don't know. Yeah, I don't know that we're allowed to do that. I would have to look.
So that's the answer.
Yeah, I, I would, I would say that we're not allowed to do that, but I think they want to keep all the second-class townships under the same,
Yeah.
under the same calendar.
Okay, so we're sure about that?
Yeah, I'm, I'll, I'll double check, but we'll, we'll let you know.
So again, if all of the revenue is coming in at the same time, what we're essentially saying is like, and we had paid out then that stuff, it's not like we're hoarding a million-plus dollars of.
No, but if you came in and, and took a snapshot at the end of April, yeah, there's, there's a lot of money in the bank because we just got it all in, but then it goes out over the years. So it does go like this, and then, and then go back down. Because we get all the tax in within, you know, eighty percent of it, seventy-five to eighty percent of it comes in in, within forty-five days, comes in from the middle of March to the end of April.
And I assume that this is happening, but, so I assume that we're taking advantage of the higher, higher rates.
Yes, where then, then we invest that money every night, yeah.
There were some time years ago where people would send in their, their tax money, and the, their checks weren't cashed for weeks or months, and we put an end to that.
Yes, that's not happening. They get cashed right away.
Right, okay. Any other questions? Anybody thinking of asking another question?
So when are we going to move to the?
We could, we could move to the police.
Can we move ahead to the next?
Yes, we can.
Let's do that right.
All right, as Larry gets me queued up, I'm, I'm up here, so I was asked to, to talk to the board tonight about some of the, the major projects that we have in the police department, which will equal kind of the larger line items that you'll see in the budget for the police. And I have six here to, to discuss with you this evening. So the first one is to replace our body worn cameras and mobile video recorders. Obviously, body worn cameras are the cameras that our officers have affixed to them as they're out on patrol. And our mobile video recorders are the camera systems that we have in our cars. So we'll be looking to add, with the K nine car being added to the fleet, we're looking to add a eighth in-car camera, and then we have a total of twenty officers, so twenty body worn cameras. We currently have a system, the mobile video recorder, so the in-car system was put in in two thousand and thirteen, so they're about ten years old. And the body worn cameras, obviously, there's a lot newer technology, and we are starting to see some decline in wear and tear on, on the equipment. So that is, that is something that we're looking to replace in two thousand and twenty-four. The total cost for that project is one hundred and thirty-eight thousand five hundred and sixty-seven dollars, which we will be spreading across five years in the capital improvement plan. The first year is a little bit heavy because we did apply for and receive a grant in the amount of twenty-three thousand seven hundred and sixty-seven dollars towards this project. And that's for, it's actually a one-to-one match for the body worn cameras, for the equipment for those. So the first year, we're a little bit heavy, but then after that, we kind of spread it out again over the, the last five years. The second one we have is our records management system. As I've been discussing for a few years now, we've been having some issues with our records management system. As you recall, Patton Township is a twelve and a half percent owner. We're in a consortium with Penn State Police, who are a fifty percent owner, State College Police Department, twenty-five percent, and then Patton and Ferguson at twelve and a half percent. So we do have a consultant that we had hired, who is currently interviewing us and, and kind of figuring out everything they want to put into the RFP that we're going to put out for the new records management system. However, we do have fifty thousand dollars, I think, there's, I missed, typed that, so fifty, fifty thousand dollars for two thousand and twenty-four. The State College Police Department also did receive a grant from PCCD, so we're hoping that that grant will cover most of the cost of our system. But we obviously are still in the kind of infancy of that and kind of working through, working through that procurement process to, to determine our needs and to find out which system's going to work best for us. And then there are ongoing maintenance costs after we do make our, our selection and continuing on. We are anticipating replacing one patrol car next year, and that is part of our matrix that we have. One of our vehicles has been in the fleet for six years, and we are in a six-year rotation for taking out our, our police cars out of service and replacing them with new. Our handguns is another large project. Handguns are issued to each officer that we have in Patton Township Police Department, paid for by the township, just like uniforms and other equipment that our officers have to carry. Our weapons, we are in a ten-year replacement on those. We've found, and the reason why we have a ten-year cycle on, on handguns is they get to the point where they start having some custody repairs, needing barrels replaced, springs replaced, different things. We have two armors in our department who do a fantastic job of keeping them maintained and, and working well, but we find that we start spending some money on replacement parts after that, that timeframe. So that's actually a, a pretty good time for us to, to replace those weapons. The K nine program, just some ongoing fees, most of that has been covered here in two thousand and twenty-three, so the vehicle has been taken care of. The Center County District Attorney's Office have paid to actually purchase the dog and the training for the dog and for the officer. However, there's going to be some ongoing fees, including food, vet care, and officer overtime that we need to cover for two thousand and twenty-four and beyond. And then lastly is the Central Booking Center. And we've discussed this a little bit, I think, but to give you kind of the complete background of exactly what's going on with that, if you don't know, the Central Booking Center is an arrest processing site that's located in the Center County Jail. The goal of the CBC is to ensure that where authorized, all individuals in Center County who commit a crime in Center County, adult and juvenile, are fingerprinted, photographed, and then all that information is recorded in the central repository with the best fingerprints, handprints, and then the most accurate demographic information that we can collect. We, along with the other municipalities here in Center County, are the municipal police agencies, so there's six total, entered into an agreement on December eighteenth of two thousand and seven to participate in a central booking project so that everybody gets processed at the jail. The Center County Court does impose a booking fee on all offenders charged with either a felony or misdemeanor crime, and that, up to this point, has funded the project. However, the agreement did predict that revenue generated from the booking fees would not fully cover the annual operating costs of the CBC, and that eventually the participating municipalities would be responsible for that shortfall, and that's where we are now. So the CBC is anticipating a projected local share of two hundred and six thousand eight hundred and twenty-seven dollars as part of its two thousand and twenty-four budget. Patton Township is going to be responsible for about twenty percent of that based on our agency's usage of the, of the CBC. They broke it down by the percentage of usage as to how much we might have to contribute to them. The commissioners for the past couple of years have picked up the tab and picked up the shortfall. However, we are at the point where it seems like Center County commissioners are not willing to continue to pay for the shortfall, and according to the contract that we currently have, again, that was entered into in two thousand and, two thousand and seven, it's going to be the responsibility of the municipalities that are using that facility. That is all the major projects that I wanted to highlight from the police department, so I'm happy to try to answer any questions you might have.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I, I do have some concerns, not about the police department at all, but I'm, I'm going to be wearing my big yawn hat tonight because I'm trying to see if there's any way you can, can spread some costs out over multiple years and to help, perhaps maybe we can even end up lowering a projected boost in tax increase to maybe point three mils instead of four. We may not get there, but that's why I'm asking this question. So you're, you mentioned the records management system, and that there was a grant that I paid for. Is that just for the, the hardware, software, or does that include consulting support?
Consulting is separate. The consulting service, we entered into a contract this year, and we had it as a separate CIP project for, for two thousand and twenty-three.
So that's a fixed cost for this year? Do that, that not change?
For the consulting?
For the consulting.
That's correct, yeah.
It's only the records management system itself, and we might not have to pay as much as we're.
Correct, yeah, and just to give you an idea, the current system we have that we bought in two thousand and seventeen was about nine hundred thousand dollars. The grant that State College has was for one point two million.
Okay, the, just a firearm replacement, you questioned it, twenty-seven thousand, is that to replace all firearms all at once?
Yeah, so we have to do it that way. We can't have officers with, with different types of weapons out on the street. Really, that cost covers firearms, but then we also have to replace the holsters because they'll be different sizes, and then also the leather gear that they have for the magazines as well. So the leather gear that we, that they carry the weapons in is included in that as well.
Now, so we can spread that out over a couple of, couple of years, but what you're saying basically is you're, you're going to be purchasing completely different weapons from what you currently have.
Correct, yeah, we currently carry a forty-five caliber, we're switching to nine millimeter.
So the entire force needs to have, you know, uniformly, they all need to have the same.
For officer safety, we can't have officers not carrying the same weapon, correct, yeah.
There's enough uncertainty without adding to that.
Yeah, the concern would be, God forbid, there be a situation where they need to share a magazine, and if you have different magazines for different guns, then obviously that could create, create a big problem, so.
To, to that point, switching from forty-five to a nine mil, why?
Couple of different reasons. The FBI has done studies upon the effectiveness of the rounds, and they are just, just as effective, if not more effective. Nine millimeter is also much cheaper, so we'll be saving money in ammunition in the long run. We did let the officers test weapons, and I value the input from the officers, and actually, pretty much unanimous that they wanted to switch to the nine millimeter. And also, a couple of the area departments also carry nine millimeters, so again, for that interoperability, we work well with State College, different tasks we might be out with them, for us to carry the same weapon is, is very beneficial for officer safety again, so.
So again, research from FBI. So again, research from FBI shows that it, you can scale back down in the caliber, and it'll still have a similar effectiveness.
Correct.
Cost-wise, it's cheaper, and it's highly unlikely, we don't necessarily utilize firearms in the provision of policing services, so why have the more expensive, higher caliber one, we're unlikely to actually use.
Correct, so yeah, all those reasons were taken into consideration, so, yep.
Anyone else? Anyone else thinking of asking that question?
And the, again, the K-9, I have my thoughts on this, but anyway. It was like 13,000 projected or something like that annual cost for upkeep, and I think you had mentioned overtime for, is that included in that 13,000?
Yes, that is, yeah. And that's part of the Fair Labor Standard Act. We have to pay the handler time for at-home care because he's going to have the dog with him 24/7. So that includes, you know, anything that he does at home, bathing it, training it, taking it out for walks, everything that is required by law, that we pay that, but yes, that is incorporated into that.
Takes a while to take your dog out into the barking lot.
I know, that poop better be cleaned up.
It will be, yes.
Got all those bags around.
I'm a cat person, y'all.
All right, yeah. Chief, you also talked about the K-9 food.
Yes.
Are we looking into getting our community involved, like, you know, some kind of contest or input like the SPCA has, donate food for different animals? Could we also do that, you know, donate to whoever, when we get the K-9, name of the dog, or, you know, donate to officer so-and-so?
Yeah, so we are going to look into different ways for the community to, I mean, the whole idea really of this dog is to engage the community. I can tell you that we were just, I was just at the Citizens Police Academy graduation. Penn State brought one of their bomb sniffing canines there because he wasn't able to come at the night that he was allotted. And I just kind of sat back and watched every single person that walked in right over to the dog, right? So a lot of it, and I'd never even thought of this, but he brought this up, that, you know, a lot of times Penn State students, they're here, they're away from their home, and part of their family is their family dog, right? So he said on campus, kids will come up and be like, oh, that looks just like my dog, you know? So just a great way to engage, it's all about community engagement, getting the community involved. But also, yeah, reaching out to the community to see if there is a way that they can help offset some of the costs of this. So yes, we were going to try to get as creative as possible to come up with some ideas of maybe ways that they can bring, we can bring in a little bit of revenue to offset some of the costs of the dog. We are going to work with a local business, and they're giving us a discount also as far as the purchase of the food too, so, yep.
Thank you.
Okay, so next is?
Public Works.
Next is Public Works.
All right. So I am pinch hitting for our Public Works Director of Operations, who is in South Dakota right now.
Yeah, correct. Give me a second.
Okay.
I thank the cog people for their patience.
There we go.
Yep.
So this is just some background on our Public Works Department. As you know, they're responsible for the short-term and long-term maintenance of all of our roads and our assets, and that also includes our parks, our facilities, and our fleet. Funding for the Public Works Department comes basically from three sources. We get liquid fuels tax money, this is the gas tax that everybody pays when you fill up with the fuel. A portion of that tax is dedicated to supporting roads in municipalities in the state. We receive a percentage of that based on the amount of road mileage that we maintain. We currently have, I believe, 62 miles of roads that we maintain in the township. And next year, we're slated to receive $466,468 from the state for liquid fuels. We have money from the general fund, and then we also get grants. And a couple of things just to note on the grants. In 2024, we're going to apply for some gaming money from the local share account, which they have set up from the gaming revenues, to replace the roof on the township building because the roof is in pretty bad shape. And we also received funding from DEP to replace the one-man leaf collection unit. You'll see that reflected in the budget. And also, we took action to replace that earlier this year, we signed the contract for that. We won't see that vehicle till next year. And we also received $7,500 from the state to replace our 2008 Prius with an electric vehicle, so we'll be doing that next year as well. Just a couple of accomplishments from 2023. We overlaid Canterbury Drive, Wooded Way, and Toft Trees Avenue and a couple other smaller streets and Toft Trees. And this project included some significant curb work, and I'll talk more about the curbing when we go into 2024. And I should also note that our Public Works crew completed some of that curb work themselves. They do a pretty great job with that. Like I mentioned, we're purchasing the new one-man leaf collection unit. We purchased a tool cat, which will do maintenance on our shared-use paths in the winter and also in the summertime, but that'll help keep them clear for folks that are riding their bikes on those paths to get to work or school in the winter. And we did spongy moth spraying. We did a total of 1,250 acres this year, and that was primarily the park forest area. So in 2024, one of the things I did when I worked with Ken on this budget, we looked at the liquid fuels account. And one of the things we really should be trying to do, and we haven't been doing, is to try to spend as much of our road projects and road-related expenses out of that liquid fuels account. That's what it's intended for. That takes your stress off of your general fund. So when we looked at the budget this year, Ken Glenn and I talked extensively about how we can save some money, how we can look at what we're doing extending the longevity of our roads, and then also leaving a fund balance so we can start building the fund balance back up in the liquid fuels account. So we're projecting to end next year with the $36,000 fund balance in that liquid fuels account, which will help start, we can roll that money over, and that will help starting us to build up that fund balance. So out of the liquid fuels tax next year, we're proposing an overlay of North Oak Lane from Galen Drive to Douglas Drive. Two things to note about this project, this is the first phase, will be a two-phase project. This includes repair of a stormwater pipe that is pretty deep in the ground, so we'll have to have a contractor or someone come in to do that. Our guys won't be able to do that themselves. And there's also curb replacement. So when we looked at the project, we looked at the cost of the curbing. We were doing rolled curb and gutter, which pretty much doubles the cost of the curbs. It was adding another $150,000 into the project, the paving project. So Ken Glenn and I went out and we looked at areas where we had done just base-mounted curb, and it's a radial curb, and we were out on a day that it was raining, and we were watching the water go down the street. It works just as effectively as a rolled curb, and it is literally half the cost. So we will do that on North Oak Lane as part of this project. That's a $288,000 project. We're actually going to also change the way we bid in that we're going to start bidding our projects earlier in the year. I went to a session at PML about, the Penn bid person did, about how to get better prices. So we're going to try to go out in the winter for our bids and do some different things to hopefully get better prices and have our work lined up and get our work done earlier and save us some more money. We're also going to do micro-surfacing. We haven't micro-surfaced in a long time. Ferguson Township does a regional contract, most of the municipalities in the county are on that contract. So we're proposing to micro-surface Grayswoods Boulevard from Scotia Road to the Penn dot line. It's not a huge section, but it's a wide section. We've included $50,000 for that line item in the budget, and based on what the contract was that last year, that should cover that project. Next, our road crew does some maintenance work on their own. We mill and patch our roads, which helps to extend the longevity of a road, and we also crack seal. So we have money set aside for that as well out of the liquid fuels allocation. And then a portion of our salt, so we use about 1,100 tons of salt a year. Our salt cost next year is $89.53 a ton, so that's about $93,000 for salt that we would need, assuming we have an average winter. So we can't pay for all of that out of liquid fuels, so you'll see $30,667 out of liquid fuels for salt, and then the corresponding $63,000 out of the general fund for the bulk of the salt that we need. Again, that's obviously weather dependent, depends on the kind of weather that we have. One of the ongoing discussions we've been having too is we use straight salt on our roads, so we have a bare road policy in Patent Township. But is there a possibility maybe in the rural areas where we don't have curbing, could we look at mixing in an aggregate that would help keep the roads still bare, but also cut down the amount of salt that we're using? So trying to look at some different ideas that we can do there because salt is astronomically expensive now. And that's bid through the state, that's a statewide contract, and we're just in the pocket of the state where it's a little bit higher than other folks. So hopefully that will all change in the next, for the next contract. Then, so for 2024, the projects we're paying for out of the general fund, so a couple of things to note. Leaf and brush collection, we use the borough's compost facility to compost our leaf and brush materials. That increased substantially, it went from, I believe it was $47,000?
Yes.
To $114,000 this year, so the borough redid their fee structure, so that's a big chunk of this. Again, I mentioned the bulk of our salt allocation, the $63,000 will come from the general fund. We also are putting $100,000 of general fund money into our road resurfacing. Again, that's to help the stress on the liquid fuels account, and then hopefully in future years, we'll be able to make that a lower amount of money, and we'll be able to pay for more of that out of liquid fuels. Salaries and benefits for our Public Works Department, and then this item, Larry and I were shocked by this, and we had a good conversation with Ryan, our engineering technician, about this. Align painting costs have increased significantly in the last couple of years, and Ryan indicated a lot of that is because the cost of the paint went through the roof after COVID. And also, we added, because for safety concerns, we added the intersections along Atherton Street, and they have to be painted every year, but we didn't want our crew going out in the past, they were doing that themselves, but because that road has such a high amount of traffic on it, we wanted to have that done through this contract. And that is also a regional contract that's bid through Ferguson Township, so we do realize some savings there, but line painting is a lot more expensive than I think we realized it was. And then, following up, I mentioned this before, just some additional projects. The Prius, we're replacing that with an all-electric vehicle. Ken and I went to Sunbury two weeks ago to look at some electric vehicles, didn't 100% like what we saw, so we're going to continue looking at seeing what's out there. Spongy moth spraying, this will come back to you at your December meeting to make some decisions. The spray areas that we're looking at next year are significantly larger, so we're going to have to make some decisions there. Then I mentioned this, our roof on our office building has reached the end of its useful life, and it's starting to get in bad shape. We're going to go, as I mentioned, for a grant from the state's local share program to fund the project. We did get one quote, so you'll see in the budget, we have like $240,000 on the revenue side and the expenditure side for that. We got, we have two additional quotes that are coming in, and we actually expect this to be a lot lower. So I'm going to apply for the grant based on the money, the quotes that we receive. We'll have to go out for bid on this project, but we think it'll probably be more like $100,000. We think the first quote was just really high. So I think that's the end of my slide.
But I will add that the grant and the expenditure were the same, so we will adjust them to the same, so we'll have no effect on fund balance.
Yeah, and that grant is due the end of November, so I should know in the next week or so, Todd's supposed to get those.
So if we drop it from 200,000 to 100,000, it's not going to have any effect on the overall budget?
Yep.
Okay.
And that should be it. So I'll answer any questions you have on the Public Works budget.
I have two questions, I'll pass it around. One is for the electric vehicle, do we have a generator for it?
We have two charging stations out front.
I mean, a generator for, let's say there's an ice storm and there's no power?
Yes.
Yes.
We have a generator.
We have a generator, yeah. And one of the vehicles we're looking at that I sort of fell in love with, it actually can be used as a generator that has an inverter in it. I don't totally understand the technology, but could actually run our traffic signals if we ever needed to hook a traffic signal up to the generator.
And second, okay, we have a liquid fuels tax, but how are we coming, how is the state coming on attacks from electric vehicles?
Yeah, that's a good question.
That's why we use the roads.
Attacks on electric vehicles.
Electric vehicles, because they use the roads too.
Yeah, gotcha, sorry, I just couldn't hear.
Yeah, that's a good question, and that's not one that I've heard an update on, but I can definitely ask PML next time I'm on a call with them, what's going on with that? Because I know they were looking at it.
Other questions?
I have a question, but I'm willing to.
Go ahead, Nancy.
Start. Okay.
Okay.
86, three questions. Talk about the roadside, the roadside contract, and part of the payment with the fuels, $63,000. But looking at the 2023 budget, it's much, much lower, is that because the fuel was paid for most of that?
Yes.
Yes.
So that's the difference.
Can you talk closer to the mic, please? Can you talk closer to the mic, please? It's hard to hear.
Okay, thank you. The next one, 0.247, repair and maintenance price for. I'm just looking at your 2023 budget and 2023 projected. I mean, the budget is 55,000, but always spent, or 7,800. Why didn't, why weren't we spending more money? And what kind of savings do we have there? And how come you're budgeting 40,000?
Again, this was an item that when we ended up paying out the actual costs, we paid them out of, we paid those material costs out of liquid fuels. That's one of the reasons why our liquid fuels fund balance is so low, because we paid it out of there, though we budgeted it out of general fund last year.
So remind me, Amy, what is your projected increase in liquid fuels fund balance next year over this year? You say you're trying to build that fund balance year by year.
Yes.
So how much are you figuring, you're increasing the fund balance at the end?
So let me pull that page up here.
You're not looking to do anything with it this year?
Right. So we're looking to, we're thinking the end of 2023, we'll end with a $16,000 fund balance, and we're hoping, is that right?
That's the number you gave me.
Okay, yeah, and so we're hoping, it's the roadside that we're saving the money. On the roadside, we're going to save $36,000, so we're going to end still with a $13,000 fund balance. We've got to start looking at these costs and how we can move some things. The road, the road stuff is what is hard for us, the road project. So we're sort of hoping, and I am at the school of, when I budget on a project, I try to budget high, and then you come in lower. So we're hoping with changing up some of the bidding things that we're doing, that that road project will actually come in under the 288, and that we'll be able to save some money there. Yeah, I was looking.
Yeah, so what we did in 2023 with liquid fuels is we supplemented it with $62,000 from the general fund, okay, which we are not going to do in 2024. We're not going to supplement at all. So we're cutting costs while we're also cutting this, the money that comes from the general fund. So that's why we're not seeing an increase in the fund balance. But over the years, as we maintain it, it will start to go back up again.
The liquid fuels tax?
Yes, the liquid fuels general fund.
And on the road resurfacing side is where, I misspoke, is where we're projecting the $36,000 fund balance out of the road resurfacing budget.
And the next one, 310 mine painting. I know you discussed that, but again, the difference between what was budgeted in 2023 and what was spent, I get the differences.
Because it definitely, it came out of liquid fuels, yeah. We did spend $50,000 in, out of liquid fuels on line painting, $51,000 and some odd dollars, yeah.
All right. Next page, applications to the reserve funds, you have the two reserve funds. One, you're putting in 100,000 on, the other one, I think it was, what, 125,000?
Well, we have two reserve funds. We have an equipment replacement reserve fund, which we put in $100,000 in 2024. We have an equipment replacement reserve fund, which we put in $100,000 in 2023. And then we're showing $327,816 for 2024, but that's offset by a $200,000 grant. Okay, so let me go to the page that that is on, is page 21. If you go back to 21, there's a $207,816 road equipment grant. So the net of those two is $120,000. Uh, yeah, $120,000.
All right, fine. I understand that, but I guess what I'm looking for is a justification for the amount you're putting.
Okay, so.
You had 125,000. Why did you pick 125,000?
Why'd I pick 120,000? Because if you go to page 140, which is the road equipment fund, the road equipment replacement fund, on page 140. On page 139, you see a schedule of replacements. Okay? So I actually, this only shows you to 2024. I actually have this going out to 2030, okay? And I tried to maintain it. You could see the cash balance dropped down at the end of 2022 to $63,000. Then we had to bump it up and we have to bump it up so that we can replace some of the bigger equipment that's coming down the pike. Okay, so that's how I justify it. It's the same thing with the police car replacement fund, except that I have an extra car in there that I have to take on. But that extra car is not going to be a one-for-one out of the general fund. It's just going to reduce the amount of money I allocate to the police car fund.
I got it. And then the second one is the road resurfacing reserve fund.
Again, we needed that 100,000. We're putting 100,000 into road resurfacing and that, in order to start building that fund back up, because we had drawn it on to nothing.
Yep.
So it's only going to have a $36,000 balance in it at the end of 2024. Okay?
Yeah, all right.
Again, looking at and, and trying to figure what roads we're going to do in the future years to make sure that we don't have one year where we have to bump up that allocation. We're trying to, to level that allocation up.
Okay. And you, Amy, you talked about the office roof replacement, but was there any text about that in the budget? I don't remember seeing an explanation for that.
Um, I think that there is. I will find it for you. I think it's.
Well, you have to do it.
The what?
The office roof replacement. It was in the CIP as well.
It was in the CIP.
Yeah, it was definitely in the CIP.
I vaguely remember that, but I don't, I don't remember seeing anything in this.
I will find it because I believe it's in there, but I will find it.
Will it help in your presentation, you talked about you're going to solicit a grant?
Yes.
Oh, God, you did. My goodness, you got it. You know, saying I've talked long enough?
No, not at all.
I've talked long enough.
Amy, who else? That's it, you have a question?
Pam, did you have?
No.
Oh, okay.
The charger for the car.
Yeah.
It's different from the, the low voltage charger that we have?
No, we use the low.
No, it's that one.
Really? So you're not going to get a fast, a faster charger?
No, and the state of Pennsylvania, interestingly enough, wants us to pay taxes on those two chargers, but if we use one for municipal uses, they can't tax us.
Oh.
That's not why we're doing that, but no, we're not getting a high voltage charger now. Because also, the one vehicle that we're looking at is hooked into the Tesla system. It's not a Tesla. But if we get it, then we actually can, the guy was explaining it, like we can charge at the Tesla stations, wherever they are, and it'll map out your route wherever you're going, so you know where to charge. So it's kind of fancy.
Okay. Are they hybrid cars?
No, they're pure plug-ins.
Oh, okay.
That's what the grants are.
Okay, but I, I thought it took longer than overnight charge on that for the, if it's all EV?
I don't know, but we will look at that for sure.
Okay, because I know for ours, which is whatever, mine's charging up there right now, because I drove here. But it takes overnight really fully charged on, so. And that's, that just gives us enough energy to travel about 40 miles. So it's not even, you know, because we're hybrid, just curious. Okay. With, I just want to get the names of the roll, the different curves. I just, I'm not familiar with them, so I just wanted to look at them.
Rolled curb and gutter?
Curve and gutter, yeah. And what's any of the other ones?
Base mounted.
Base?
Mm-hmm.
Base mounted, thank you, okay. And, yeah, and the salt, it's interesting, you say they're looking at it at the state level?
We, so we're through a state contract, that's where we get our salt from.
Okay. So I read something recently about the actual pollution of salt in, into the ground and it's not just here, I mean, it's worldwide. So I think anything that we can do to get more information on that and keep it on our, on our radar, using it in the, the roads that don't have curves, is that the issue? So you don't want that aggregate to collect from the curve?
Yeah, and the curved, it's a conversation that Glenn and Ken and I are having and they're not 100% on board with the conversation, so we'll continue having it. But in the curved sections, the aggregate leaves behind stone.
Yeah.
And we have to sweep any, all of that anyway for our stormwater program. But in the more rural sections, it's a little bit easier to deal with because there aren't currents out there.
Okay, great, that's it. Yes, so really no big, fine, thanks.
Any other questions?
Quickly, just the, can you explain the Penn State impact fees, their history?
So the impact fee is a fee-in lieu that they pay for properties they own in the township that are not eligible for taxes because they're non-taxable. So there's an agreement and the agreement is between everyone in the county except for College Township. College Township has a separate agreement because they have the stadiums. So that agreement actually expires at the end of 2024 and we're meeting next Friday. We met once already at the county, it's the County State College, Ferguson, Patton, Harris, I think Benner gets money as well. We're all getting together because we're going to have to renegotiate that pilot fee-in lieu agreement with them. They have, we have the contract that they have with Dairy Township, Dauphin County, because they have properties down there as well. We also have the agreement that the school district has. So that agreement's supposed to go up, there's supposed to be basically an adjustment every year for inflation and I'm not sure what's happened with that. They also can appeal, they have a schedule that they keep with the county and they can appeal properties that they feel are not subject to the fee-in lieu. And I know like in the borough, a couple of years ago, the big discussion piece was the hub because they put commercial buildings or commercial businesses within the hub. And so the borough made the argument, I think successfully, that those properties are commercial businesses, not educational facilities, and so they should be subject to paying the full tax, not the pilot in lieu tax. So it's an ongoing discussion, it's likely going to take us the better part of 2024 to get that resolved. You will see that every step of the way as we start working on this. The elected officials, of course, are an integral part of that, especially with the county. And also with Penn State having new leadership, right? This was negotiated a long time ago, 2004. So all of that leadership is largely no longer at the university.
Okay, I'll be curious about how that process unfolds. I don't, I'm blanking, I don't know where my notes are, but I know we were talking about taxes or something like that in here and, and the residents who are getting older are leaving out, which is reducing sort of like revenue because then the younger, newer individuals who are, have a lower sort of like income and salary and stuff like that aren't able to contribute as much to our tax base. But if Penn State is a pretty large employer, I imagine a lot of those young people are at Penn State, it's, their salaries are based on what Penn State's paying and it might be helpful to advocate that you need to be paying, you know, these individuals some more money, contributing some money in some ways, whether it be through salaries or through this tax, this impact fee to help support, you know, the local communities who will need that revenue, so, you know.
Any other questions? You know, the next thing will be the cog budget, but I'm going to suggest.
We're, we're not done yet.
Oh, you're not done yet, so we can't do that.
We have two more sections, engineering, planning and zoning, please.
Right, okay.
Sorry, cog.
It, it'll be fast cog, I apologize. Okay. So engineering, planning and zoning. This is our department, that is sort of our major department in transition. So in 2023, our former township engineer left and then when that happened, I temporarily merged the department with the public works department. And I asked our director of public works operations to assume the interim department head duties and that's been working out fairly well. We also brought in a contracted engineer, Michelle Marrow, and alter run engineering to provide engineering services. And I've asked her to stay on in 2024, up to 20 hours a week, because we have a lot of plans and moving parts and she's agreed to do that. Our cog planner also departed in 2023, this will play into our cog plan, budget discussion later, but we're currently paying, still paying the cog local planning program, but we're also paying Ferguson Township 10 to 15 hours a month to provide planning review services until the cog is able to, hopefully until the cog is able to bring on another local planner. So in 2024, one of the things that I am going to do, and I will do this myself, is to do a strategic plan for this department and also for the public works department. Because I want to look at and try to determine our optimum staffing needs and structure for that department. We do need in some fashion an in-house engineer and that's something that we'll need to look for, for 2025. We also need to figure out the planning question, conundrum, because we're essentially going to be double paying for a service we're going to get once. And because of the amount of money that we'll be paying to the cog, if they're not able to fill that local planning position, we're going to spend 2024 paying a lot of money for not, and not being able to fill the position in-house. If we didn't have to pay that full amount to the cog, we could be able to go out and find our planner. So that's something we'll need to look at as we move forward into the new year. So funding for this department comes basically from three sources. The general fund, the open space program has their own dedicated millage and they also have a significant grant that they use for their work. And then we do get grants, we do a lot of traffic signal work and some roadway improvements that we have grants from the state for. So just quickly, in 2023, a couple of things we accomplished. The patent crossing roadway improvement project, that's actually a contract that we're overseeing and that we are also administering the grant for. The grant is from the state of Pennsylvania for $1.5 million and that work is moving along quite nicely. We also oversaw the replacement of the traffic signal at North Atherton Place. That signal was actually taken out in an accident. We reviewed nine plans, including the rezoning request for Clearview Avenue. We continued the work on the conservation plan updates for the Hawt tract and Gray's Woods Preserve. And we started the planning process for the forestry management plan for our newest open space property, the Seward tract. So in 2024, a couple of things, the Atherton Street Signal Coordination Project, this was the grant that the township was holding, but it was actually for all the municipalities between Patton Township and Harris Township, so the whole length of Atherton Street minus Ferguson, because they did their own thing. So we actually have $441,450 left to spend. We did the signal coordination this year, that was $274,000. The next phase will be upgrades to various locations within that corridor for signals. Hawbaker Drive and Industrial Drive here in the township will be our focus. We need to do pedestrian upgrades there, there aren't any pedestrian signal buttons now and a countdown timer and some things, so we'll be working on that. And College Township has a project, I believe State College will have a project and Harris will have a project. So the rest of that money will be spent, there's no match required for that, so that's all 100% from the state. The township is a part of, as you know, the MS4 project in the region. One of the things we have to do, we have a pollution reduction plan that was adopted by the region a number of years ago. We have to complete a stormwater project, we're going to do a restoration, stream bank restoration project along Meeks Lane. It is a very complicated and expensive project, but we have to do it to get the credits so that we can fulfill our requirement under that plan. We'll start the project next year, we have to do some permitting through DEP. We also have to get an easement from the landowner along that area. So we've already started discussing that in-house here and we'll be moving forward with that and we have to have it done by the end of '25. We also got $70,000 in state funding to upgrade the pedestrian signals on the Colonnade, the Colonnade Boulevard. That work will be done after the Penn Highlands Micro Hospital opens this spring, because they're putting in a new traffic signal with that project. And for Betsy, this is something Betsy and I had discussed, we're going to join the B-City USA program in 2024. B-City USA basically is a program that provides a framework for communities to help our pollinators. It's a very minimal amount of money to join, you then have a certain amount of things that you have to do. My colleague in Camp Hill Borough, they joined and she's offered to give me information on kind of the things that they had to do. So it'll be some planning things, we'll have to do some pollinator projects and maybe some planting projects and things, and Betsy and I have been discussing that. And then just two things on the open space side, we'll complete the conservation plan for the Hawt tract and the Gray's Wood Preserve and we have funding from the Hamer Foundation for that. And we will also complete the forest management program for the Seward property, which is up on Skytop. And if you have any questions, I will answer them.
Do we have any questions? It appears we do not have any questions.
Okay.
One quick question.
Oh, yes.
Sorry. If someone knocks down one of the traffic lights, who pays for that? Their insurance or us?
The insurance pays for it.
Okay, good.
That was funded 100% by the insurance.
Yeah, i- if they knock it down, their insurance pays for it. If it falls over for some reason or gets hit by lightning, our insurance will pay for it.
Okay.
Okay.
Last section. That we save the best for last, as Elliot would say.
Well, we're going to have a four-minute break right now.
Break.
And then we'll regroup.
Okay. Okay.
Somebody else called.
Yeah, sure.
I don't know.
And this is to have a couple of remarks.
Well, thank you for that introduction, Mr. Chair. Good evening, everyone. With me tonight, we have a number of COG staff, including online Christie Owens, our Parks and Rec Director. We also have our new Finance Director, Kimberly McMullin. We have our Library Director, Lisa Collins, our Planning Director, Jim May, and Principal Transportation Planner, Jim Saylor. So they're all here to help me with questions and conversations that we want to have with you tonight. So let me just make a few opening remarks and just comment about the past year. Since we finished the last budget cycle in 2022, there were a number of improvements that were discussed and implemented for the preparation of the 2024 budget. These included an updated schedule, creation of a new budget guideline for staff to follow that would limit the average growth of municipal shares towards funding the baseline budget. And our goal was to deliver to you a budget that is both reasonable and equitable and that meets the priorities that were established earlier this year by the COG through a process that engaged the municipalities. These changes were put into place earlier this year, and the capital improvement program and program plan documents were prepared and reviewed by municipalities on schedule. As you're aware, we had a number of new staff involved in the budget process this year, as well as staff who had new responsibilities that were different from previous years. So we've had a learning experience, and I'm grateful for the patience of the Finance Committee, in particular, your representative on the committee, Dan Trevino, as well as other elected officials and municipal staff, as we navigated the process over the past few months. A side benefit is that with all of the new staff who are involved, we will have new ideas and better ways of doing things, so watch for improvements in the future. Quick remark about the guideline. The budget guideline for this year covered what I call the baseline budget. That means continuing the current level of service from 2023 into 2024, plus the cost of living adjustment and merit increases and other costs of doing business to deliver the same level of services. We worked hard to stay within the guideline that was set at just over 8%, specifically 8.05%, using the formula that the Finance Committee established earlier this year. And within that, we were able to cover the cost of the market adjustments from the recent classification and compensation study. Other requests were then reviewed by the Finance Committee over a series of budget review sessions, and some of those are now included in the summary budget that you received previously. These are listed on page 11 of the summary budget, and with those added initiatives, and some were additions and some were reductions, the average increase now in municipal shares is 10.68%. Also shown on page 11 is a reference to a recommendation that is not included in the summary budget, but that we request be still considered for funding so that the CCMPO team can pursue federal funding through the bipartisan infrastructure legislation. You had handed out to you a page that shows that that request, and the bottom line on that request shows the proposal that was approved by the Finance Committee, developed during their discussions, and now shows the breakdown for municipal shares for that proposal. And as I said, Jim Saylor is here to talk about that. Well, with that, Mr. Chair, I'll turn things back over to you, and then the COG team and I can answer any questions, provide any insight that you may need on the summary budget or the other topics on the related to the COG tonight. So, thank you.
Thank you. And does anyone, do any of you have a specific thing you wanted to say to us first before we ask questions?
You know, I think we're ready to dive in in whatever way you want to review the summary budget. We could go through section by section, or perhaps Mr. Trevino has some comments to share from the Finance Committee perspective.
You're the fiscal expert on this, so.
No, I'm no expert, but thank you. As you all know, and at the last meeting, I summarized the results of our Finance Committee budget hearings and in preparation for what you see in front of you, the summary budget, and the reasons why the increase in municipal contributions are significantly higher than for the 2024 year, budget year, than they were for the 2023 budget year because of some big-ticket items that we felt were, we, the Finance Committee, agreed with COG staff that were really important. We did, however, reduce the total of the COG requests quite a bit. So I guess my bottom line is, I don't like it that much, but I'm comfortable with what we are, what COG is presenting to us for reviews as a 2024 proposed budget. And as you can see on page eight of the summary that they have provided to us, page eight is the 2024 budget breakdown, including by departments and also by township contributions. Townships increase over 2023 going to be 11.17%. And it'll be $20 million, $22,750. I don't know that I need to spend any time again saying what I said last, at our last meeting about the big-ticket items that were here that we included because they were important. Just briefly, the results of the classification and compensation study of the COG employees, we had, what, 52, 53 COG employees whose salaries were below market, and almost all of the municipalities, one exception, agreed that we needed to raise those salaries to get them off of, out of fairness, to get them back up to market. But the Finance Committee agreed to do this, to support that, but to spread the increases over two years instead of having them all done in one year. Other big-ticket items, the Fire Department, the proposed, proposal to hire four firefighters, which is new because all our firefighting personnel are, except for the administrative staff, the spear staff, I'm talking about the firefighter here, until now they've all got off. But we still have a very long component of volunteers, but there are some shortfalls in service, especially nights and weekends. And the firefighters are trained to operate, to drive the vehicles, the responding vehicles. So the Fire Department and the Code Enforcement Office proposed a, it might be a very unique and creative solution in that these four individuals would be trained also in fire inspection, and so they would work for the Code Enforcement Office as fire inspectors, and then also about 40% of their time, they would work for the Fire Department as firefighters and vehicle drivers. So those were two big items. Another big item is the request from Center County Municipal Planning Organization to add a staff person and consulting funds to be able to submit grant proposals for the bipartisan legislation, like infrastructure legislations, that probably put their money to be awarded to Pennsylvania and that will be available for us to apply for for big-ticket transportation projects. So my bottom line on this stuff, I'm going to say I support what is presented in front of you as a COG budget for 2024.
Thank you, Jamie. Other questions?
I don't have a question, but I have to piggyback on my colleague. As Chair, at, as Chair of Public Safety, the firefighter dual positions were very important. And one of the top items that we, as the committee, supported in need, the shortcoming of firefighters being on staff during the weekends really brought it home for us, you know, and for certain sections not being covered for our constituents, it was major for us to follow up and support this unanimously. So I'm in support of this.
Okay, one of the key areas has been in planning, and the fact that our excellent Planning Director has resigned, and the department has been decimated, what do we think is going to be happening over the next year? And we're going to have a new director that is coming onboard almost immediately, and that'll start things.
So, yes, we have a, I think, an excellent incoming Planning Director who will start on the 20th, and Mike has been working closely with Jim remotely, as they have been working to do screening interviews for both of the positions, the Principal Planner position, as well as the Senior Land Use Planner. So they've been working to advance filling those positions promptly, and I will let our outgoing Planning Director fill in a little bit more on that because I think we're pleased with the direction of it.
Thank you, Eric. Good evening, everyone. I'm glad to be here. I just have a very short presentation. I wanted to update you on kind of our staffing situation and funding issues, and then talk a little bit about some consensus comments for tonight. So your position has been vacant for one month on this Friday, so that's been four weeks, coming up on four weeks. We have interviewed people this week for first interviews. We've scheduled interviews for the week of November 27th to fill this position, so I think we're on track to get this filled pretty quickly. We have had one position that's split between regional planning and Half Moon that has been open for about 16 months. That's a unique situation, and we just haven't been able to fill that position, so. And then our other planner position, Mark Bockel, who moved to the manager position, and Harris Township has been vacant for a couple of months, but we're also interviewed this week for that position, and we will be interviewing the week of November 27th. As Eric mentioned, I've been working with Mike Tilka, the incoming director. He arrives here on November 22nd, but we've been working over Zoom, going through some, kind of prepping him for some of the issues. He's been involved in the interviews. One reason this interview was delayed a little bit was because we wanted the new Planning Director to be part of that process and hire the staff that he thinks he'll need. So process is moving great, and thank you for your patience. I know it's hard for everyone when we go through these situations, but it happens to every organization. It kind of, things fall apart, and they come back together again. So let's start talking a little bit how we're coming back together again in the future. The first is, I want to talk a little bit about just kind of the local planning situation. Right now, the municipalities and the local planning program, the three municipalities, the way that funding formula is established, you pay for the salary and benefits for the planner that you have in your municipality. Then like any other professional support services agreement, you play, pay for support service, some of the director time, some of our office manager time, some of our GIS technician time to do mapping. Plus, we pay rent in the COG building, we have electricity, operating costs, computer expenses, office equipment, so that is also shared by the local program. So this proposal to go through half of a year and then drop out of the program can be problematic. We can definitely, what's going to happen after six months? In 2024, the budget for the local planning services and Patton is about $60,000. So if you drop out after six months, there's $30,000 that somehow disappears. And somehow, we're going to have to take the support staff costs, because those people are working at COG now, and the money that goes to rent, electricity, supplies, and all that, and distribute that to other municipalities in the local planning program. I don't know if we can do that through the COG formula. The way that we've historically done that is that you stayed in the COG program and received a credit the following year as a fund balance. I know you don't like that because it's holding taxpayer money, and it's not being spent. But historically, that's the way we've done it, and I think that what that does, it buffers the other municipalities from having an adverse financial impact that they didn't expect because it gives them a year to prepare for them to either provide more funding or figure out what to do. So tonight, as you're thinking about your comments for the COG budget, like Amy said, your planning and engineering department is transitioning, so is ours. We have a totally new director coming in here, and I want to be able to position him for success the best that I can, and that is getting the staff that he wants and figuring out what to do with our program. I think we're trying to unwind about 60 years of a partnership with you in two weeks, and I don't think that's feasible, and I don't think it's fair to the other municipalities that would get costs shifted over to them. It's just a substantial departure from COG policy. So, but if you want to fix that in the future, some comments that you could probably provide back to the COG Finance Committee are to take a look at the Articles of Agreement and come up with a different way to allow municipalities to exit from COG programs. Because one of the other things that gives me a little heartburn about this is right now, I'm the only COG agency where it's proposed that if we don't hire a position within a certain amount of time, you're going to stop the funding for it. I just don't know if that's going to be applicable to other agencies, or it's just unfair to our agency. The other thing you can do is consider adopting an ordinance at some point to withdraw from the local planning program. That's certainly your option, and we've talked about that a little bit. When we first started this relationship, the population of the township was about 2,400. So we're 15,000 now, and you certainly have complexities of planning issues, affordable housing issues, quality of neighborhood issues that you have some resources to address. So that's another thing you can think about. And the last thing we're going to have to do is take a look specifically at the local planning program funding formula. We did receive the Half Moon Township Board Agenda, and they do have an ordinance that they're looking at tomorrow night to withdraw from the local planning program. So that leaves two potentially, or one municipality in the program, and we really have to look at how that is funded because it's just not sustainable the way it is currently funded moving forward. So I would ask that you consider staying in the program for 2024, giving us a chance to re-envision what the local and regional planning program can be, and work with the township as you restructure your planning and engineering division in the future. So thank you for the time, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Good God.
All right. Who is it?
Do we know what that is? That's highly.
I touched the paper.
While they're fixing that, hopefully. Jim, just a clarification, you mentioned the, you know, the infrastructure support for, in your office.
Right.
We are still, we, Pat Township, is still paying you to the regional planning component of your office, right?
Right.
I assume that's where all of this infrastructure costs are going, and that the local planner cost to us was just the salary and benefits for the local planner?
Nope.
You're saying that's not true?
No, it's never been that way, Dan.
Okay, there's.
It's usually been split by the number of full-time equivalents in each program. So generally, the regional program has 60 to 65% of the personnel. So for that program, all the operational costs and the support staff costs and the planner's time are just put into one bucket, and then it's split up based on the COG formula. So Patton pays 15% or something. But the other 40 to 35 to 40% is assigned to the local planning program. So it's kind of the way it's always been done. But going forward, if, and that worked when there was six municipalities, and it worked when there's four municipalities, it got hard when there was three because the operational and support costs are now spread over half as many municipalities, and we can't continue to do that, particularly if Half Moon drops out. So, but it's always been that way. Yep.
I didn't even realize that it was only three municipalities. What, who is and is not involved?
Patton, Harris, and Half Moon are in the local planning program, and we expect that Half Moon is going to adopt an ordinance tomorrow to withdraw from the local planning program, leaving Patton and Harris.
And we're, we're going to look at your ordinance next week to withdraw in 2025.
And so why did College and State College withdraw? Because they have their own planners?
State College withdrew probably in the 1980s sometime. They just felt they were large enough and had the specialized problems and needed their own planning department. Ferguson was the same way.
Oh, I forgot about Ferguson.
They got, they got large enough. College Township, for a long time, had a full-time planner, and that manager always told us, when that planner leaves, we're going to hire our own planner rather than do it with COG because we have a full-time position. And so when that planner left, they, they were out of the program, so.
So I'm kind of seeing a pattern here, which disturbs me. I don't, well, the.
Well, it's, I think it's kind of natural, as the municipalities get larger, that you have, you have resources to hire a planner, and most of them wanted a planner in their building full-time to deal with local issues. We still do the regional planning component for six municipalities, and that cost is split by the.
And then do, so you do the, the planning for the region, do, are, currently, are Patton, Harrison, and Half Moon the only ones who contribute?
To the local planning program.
To the local planning program.
And all six municipalities participate in the regional planning program. So we have.
Yeah, so I'm just not very, I know the COG formula. I didn't realize that we somehow would, that, that, below that, there was the subset of the monies exchanged for the planner, of planning, to be, to have 40, 30 to 40% of a planner, which is what we had with.
We have 50%. Now we're going to 40% in 2024, and then you're, you're leaving in 2025, potentially.
Yeah, it's, it's kind of, it's not a very straightforward way of allocating costs, but it's, the managers and CRPA and COG came up with this about the time that College Township withdrew, so.
About, oh, okay.
That was 2019, yeah.
So what specifically are we being asked to do?
I was asked to make a presentation or to talk about the impacts of if Patton Township wanted to stop local planning halfway through 2024. And I was just trying to explain some of the impacts.
Can I, can I address that?
Yes.
Can I, can I address that? Amy, thank you. So, Jim, you know, first of all, I want, I want to say that, you know, I hope that everything with the new Planning Director, it all, it all works out, and Patton Township stays in local planning, to be honest with you. I don't want to have to deal with another.
Thanks, Larry.
I know, but I have to deal with another employee. However, I see best-case scenario, worst-case scenario.
Sure.
Okay? Best-case scenario is January 1st, we get a land use planner on, onboard, okay? We, we're paying 40% of that planner, we get 40%, we don't have to pay Ferguson any money, we're getting, that's great, we're in it for the whole year.
Right.
Okay? Not a problem. Probably don't drop out in 2025 either, because like I said, I think we would be happy. Worst-case scenario is you don't get a land use planner until sometime in the second half of the year, okay? This is where the half of the year, so I pay for a full year of a planner for six months. You only have them half, I'm just pre, I'm taking my credit ahead of, six months ahead of schedule. I've already paid for six months.
The, the other side of that coin is, I have to figure out how to find the other revenue to pay the other.
Okay, so we could talk about the, the, I understand the allocation of costs, and I understand it's not just the wages and benefits. There's also the allocation of the director, there's the rent, there's depreciation, there's all the other costs. Believe me, I understand all that. And we could talk about what that number is. Now, Amy has said 10%. Maybe that number is 20%, okay, of, of the $60,000. Then we'll pay that for the remaining six months. Do you follow what I'm saying? We, we won't pay any more the portion that is the wages and benefits of the land use planner that I've already paid for six months if that employee is only going to be hired, only going to be onboard for six months.
Right.
The amount that's in addition to the wages and benefits, I'll pay that for the full year.
Yeah, and this all came from, at the Manager's Breakfast, because this doesn't just impact Patton Township, right? This impacts our friends in Half Moon and our friends in Harris. So at the Manager's Breakfast in October, we sat, and Jim May was there, Eric was there, all the managers were there, and Adam Brumba moderated the discussion. And College Township had an interesting situation when they were let out of local planning. They had a situation where their planner left, and College Township went to the COG, and the COG agreed, and this was when Jim Steph was the executive director, not Eric, it was before his time, but they agreed to let them out in the middle of the year because of the situation, and they said, okay.
They paid three quarters of the year.
Yeah, they, okay, so they said they could leave. So when we discussed this, the discussion that we had was, right now, I, when Leslie was still here, I had no problems with the local planning program, absolutely none at all. Local planning's been a great program. I think everyone would agree in the region, it's been a great program from all the municipalities that have been in it. But Leslie's not here, and I have plans coming in, literally two a day now, that we have to worry about and get reviewed, and we have statutory regulations that say we have 90 days, or 30 days, or 60 days, or whatever, to get these plans reviewed. So that's why I had to go to Ferguson Township. I, I'm a manager. Managers can't sit around and wait. I have to make sure we have a plan to handle this. So I went to Ferguson after I emailed all the other managers. Ferguson offered to help us. So when we had the conversation at the October meeting, we said, Adam came up with it, is there a situation where halfway through the year, planners are very hard to find, they're hard to come by, not just here, everywhere. My colleagues in the West are having a horrible time hiring in the Pittsburgh area. So could we come up with a scenario where, in this case, it's not that Patton Township is saying, we're not getting great service, we're not getting any service. So I'm paying you to not have a planner for six months, I'm paying Ferguson to do the planning. I can't go out and hire a planner because I don't have the money available, right? That's more taxes that we would need. So we talked about, could you run the numbers? That's all we wanted to do, and there was an agreement in principle to run the numbers when we left and to use some of the fund balance from regional funding, regional planning to cover, because my intent was never to hurt any of the other municipalities, but give us the flexibility that if there isn't anyone in place by, or any planners coming in place by, say, May 31st, the Board of Supervisors could say, there's nobody here, we would like to be let out, we'll pay the surcharge, not the wages and the benefits, but we'll pay the surcharge. We had talked about 10% at the meeting, maybe it's 20%, whatever, so that we don't hurt our other friends in the, in the planning program, but we're able to move on, and we're
Which would be one, one person, one other, Harris maybe?
Well, Half Moon's still in for '24. They wouldn't be out until '25.
So their resolution that, or ordinance that they're doing is to get out when?
It's the same as us. It's January 1st, 2025.
Yeah. Yeah, I think of a one-year.
Yeah. So this way, it gives us flexibility, right? And the discussion point that we also have had at the manager level is the COG articles of agreement don't anticipate a time when the COG, for whatever reason, right, isn't able to provide a program or a service that you're paying for. And at the base level, the COG is a regional service provider. So just being able to look at, and, and we've left, and we all thought the numbers were going to be run so we could discuss it. And then I understand some of the regional planning fund balance was used for other expenses in the COG. That's fine, that's their purview. So perhaps it doesn't work, but the numbers were never run. And so that's the discussion, and that's the discussion Larry and I have been having. It's not to disparage the program. It's not to disparage regional planning, which is a great program. It's not to disparage transportation or any other pieces of CRPA. It's just that right now, I have plans coming in literally every day that have to be reviewed. And Jim May's retiring November 22nd, and he's also covering Half Moon and Harris in addition to Patton. So I need to make sure that Patton Township is doing right by its residents in terms of these plans that are coming in, and that we're not getting ourselves in trouble by not meeting our statutory regulations. And having some flexibility was all we wanted. And if that's not possible, I just wanted them to run the numbers so they could have said, you know, it really doesn't work. And then I can say to you, we tried, we looked at, because that's what Larry and I have to do, right? It's, it's our budget that we put together, and we're already talking about a tax increase, and there's stresses on our general fund. So then we could say, we looked at everything, and this is what we feel, and we feel that we have to honor what's in the Articles of Agreement. They tried to run the numbers, the flexibility isn't there. That's all we were looking for. We were not trying to disparage that program. And I hope, I think the new planning director, I watched his presentation, he looks great, and he, he's mentored folks where he's come from. I hope he's able to come in, and I hope he's able to get some, some younger planners in here and mentor them, and we get a rock star planner, and this is in a conversation in February. That's, that's my hope.
Two things that I was also hoping for was that we could give this new person some time to build a program, and we could work with the municipalities so we could all agree, if, if we're going to lose local planning in the municipalities, do we shift things over to regional planning? Do we improve our sustainability program? I just feel we have made a couple of exceptions in the past, and I acknowledge that. But I feel this budget year, we have to have the guide rails that say, we're following the COG formula. And then if, if Patton Township is not happy with that, you either approach the Executive Committee or the Finance Committee and say, we want to look at a different way of doing this in the future because this has hurt us this year. So that's where I'm coming from. I think, like I said, I think we're trying to unwind a long-term agreement and partnership in a way that potentially could be more harmful than we think it would be. And that if you can stick with us, I'm, I'm sure we can deliver the services you want. Within the next month, the planning director will be here. He has at least as much experience reviewing plans in Patton Township as, as the Ferguson planner, which started from zero. So I think we can start providing those services and, and do you well. So what I'm asking for is that you don't, if you want to proceed by withdrawing halfway through the year, I think that needs to be made, that decision needs to be made at COG, not by the CRPA or Patton Township alone. So that's, I'll leave it there. Thank you.
Just clear-
What do we want to do then?
I actually have a procedural question here.
Sure.
We're discussing the budget in general. We've sort of gone down a rabbit hole or focused on a particular aspect, and we did, I think, have it somewhat on the agenda at this point. Do we, the ideas are fresh, we put the time and energy into it right now. Jim's made his presentation, Larry and Amy have made a counter, offered a presentation. So is it okay for us to stick with this, discuss it? And I apologize to the other people from COG who are, are here and have to wade through that, but I feel that it's important. And I do want to say one last thing, that I feel that procedure is very important, and that's where I'm hearing something from Jim that I hadn't heard, and I've, I've seen both sides of this, right? So I, I would like to suggest that we continue this discussion on this particular issue right now and come to some resolution about whether we're going to stay or go, even though that's later in the agenda.
So I'd like to discuss that right now as to whether we want to stick with the six months.
Right, as opposed to-
Some other number.
I'm sorry, the procedure that I'm asking about right now is whether we can continue with this discussion, and if it's, I don't know if we need to ask permission of the other heads of departments to wait while we do this, and then we will get to their part of the budget a little bit later.
Well, we can legally, I mean, this is a public meeting, and so we can legally do that.
Okay. I just wanted to see if I had agreement with my, from my fellow ordinance.
Oh, yeah, I thought we were still just talking about it.
Pardon?
Yeah, I thought we were still just talking about it.
Yeah, we are. It's just, I didn't know if it was out of order, that's why.
Oh.
I just wanted to bring that up. Can everybody hear me? Sorry about that.
Um, for clarity, so if the local planning, if those services are, so it seems like the plan is to try to get the director here and then have time for the director to be able to bring in more planners to, to fill whatever the need is for, for local planning, and so.
Yes, that's one of them. And the, and the other thing is that the way for municipalities to withdraw from a COG program is to adopt an ordinance and get out in the following budget year so that the other municipalities have time to plan for any impacts on their budget.
Okay. And so, and, and what I heard, though, which was new, is that, that, that's the expectation or the hope, but it's not actually clearly outlined in whatever the agreements are, that that's the process, and it seems like there were some exceptions made in the past for people to get out early.
Right.
Two since I've been here. One was in Patton, and one was in College.
How necessary is it then for us to be an exception?
Okay. So, I mean, technically, we wouldn't be an exception to, to try to get out earlier than the year, whatever the year is after the ordinance is created, so, because there's already been exceptions. What I'm hearing, though, is even with the new director coming, sorry, let me take a step back. Where we, that this team not to be hired to provide the local planning services, we, again, would be paying in advance for these services for the year, but we would still also be paying extra for Ferguson to provide these services.
Correct.
Okay. However, what I heard is that if we hire the director, or the director's coming in, the director could actually potentially provide some degree of local planning services without that team.
Yeah. Plans slow down this time of year and-
Not in Patton Township.
Correct.
But I, back to the exception, if I may, just, I think it's particularly important that this budget year, it's, this is the hardest budget year I've ever been at in COG in fourteen years. And I'm concerned that this now, other, other folks will say, well, after six months, if the library doesn't hire this position, I'm just not going to pay my, my share for the rest of the year. So I think we're going down a path of unintended consequences by doing that. I'm confident that you're going to have a position and filled, a planning director and a position filled soon. Can't promise that, but I do see a downside to continuing to do this without getting the entire COG involved in the decision-making process. Before, we've done it with the managers, and those two exceptions were at a time when budgets were good, people were happy, the costs were spread over a larger program, and it was easier to absorb. This time around, I don't know if we can do that without some unintended consequences.
Yeah, and I, I guess I hear that, and again, this, this clarity is helpful, at least for me, being able to learn about this stuff. I, I think the, it seems like the frustrating thing on my end, again, with someone without, with limited sort of like knowledge around this, is that it seems like we're now, given the exceptions that have been made in the past, it seems like we are now being penalized, those who have remained in here, from being able to actually extricate ourselves, right? And so for me, that, that feels a little frustrating. And I would say like the compare, I'm not even going to go into that. Again, numbers-wise, did I hear like $60,000 is what we're contributing to local planning?
For the 2024 budget year, yes.
Okay. And so technically, if we were, again, trying to pull out half of the year, that would be like $30,000 or something like that, we would, we would be wanting, I'm sorry, I'm not sorry, just for clarity, so hiring more planners, technically what I heard is that their job responsibilities could shift into more regional planning-related things.
Depending on what happens in the local planning program, yes. And that's longer term. That is not for the 2024 year. For 2024, we're committed to providing local planning services to Patton Township, Harris Township, and Half Moon Township, and then regional planning to the, all six municipalities, so.
I mean, honestly, I think I was in, in favor of, again, extricating ourselves if the services weren't able to be provided. Again, I think just fairness-wise, I think we definitely have a responsibility to, you know, upholding, you know, these agreements that we've gotten ourselves into. And just like equity-wise, like, again, we have our needs, and it just seems to be a little bit of unfairness about compelling us who are seemingly in the minority to slightly remain in something that isn't actually working for us. I, I love partnerships, and I value the COG too, and, and clarity, when you say bringing this back to the COG to make the decision, are we talking about who, like, what, all the municipalities to make this decision? Because if they're not actually, if most of those aren't even, and they've removed themselves from this position, I don't even know how they even have a say in, in what we do, so.
I, yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't intend this to make it look like we're trying to not make you an exception. But I feel, I feel, once you've made some exceptions, at some point you have to say, is the rule really what it should be? Should we just allow municipalities to continue doing this? Because what I am concerned about is that other municipalities will say, well, we're, we're financially hurting now too, and we don't want to pay for that service because you haven't filled the position. So I'd like that clarified. And when I say going back to COG, part of tonight's meeting is making consensus comments back to the COG Executive Committee and to the General Forum, and maybe one of them could be, we need to look at this withdrawal process because it's not working for the municipalities the way that we think it should be. So that's what I was suggesting.
Yeah. And so that, that makes sense, and just quickly, I'll, I'll be dinner soon. I think the comparison, though, between like planning services and, as Amy is saying, we, we have statutory, is that the word, statutory agreements, that it needs to be done at a specific timeframe. With the, some of the other programs like Library and stuff like that, I get the positions, it's like aspirational things, like it's not necessarily needed or not going to necessarily compromise the functioning of whatever, but, and so I, I think that those differences would need to be articulated, and I don't think it's that much of a slippery slope if, you know, anyway, doesn't really feel like a fair comparison. What I'm saying, though, is that I was adamantly in agreement with, you know, let's remove ourselves if we're not getting the services that we need halfway through. I'm shifting a bit to say, if there's, there seems to be some expectation or belief, again, things change, that y'all will be able to provide those services in a, in, in that first quarter, or it was the second quarter, whatever that may be, and that the director potentially could be providing some of those services, however small. Again, right now, us, to maintain good relations and, and allow for this new person coming in to actually build their team and vision, it's sort of like I'm giving faith that we'll be served. And so I, I feel like, again, we can have a discussion on how we want to move forward, but I think I would be okay with extending and waiting for the year paying and seeing what happens, so, no, I'll be quiet now.
Is that okay? So it, it seems to me that we've got two challenges at the moment. One is short-term, you know, we need, we need a solution. The second is long-term and, and of a wider region. So small-term, local, long-term, wider. But I'm going to go back to procedure, and I don't know if it even matters at this point, but I'm wondering what the procedure was when State College stepped out, and when Ferguson stepped out, and when, when College stepped out. Did they just say, we're stepping out, or did they have to go through essentially the process that Half Moon is going through now with the library? They had to announce, you know, have a resolution saying that they're, within a year, they're going to be out of the library?
Yeah. Ferguson and State College of Borough adopted ordinances.
Okay. So it was a similar, so the procedure was similar?
State College, yeah.
So there weren't really an exception?
College Township was an exception, and I think it was-
You say it was or wasn't?
Patton, yeah, Patton went from a hundred percent on to fifty percent.
In, without the year?
2013.
2013.
Without a one-year waiting?
Right.
Like we're being asked to.
And those were, yeah, those are situations-
Okay. So I just, I, I like to look at the big picture, and I like to look at procedure. I don't, I don't feel that we're being asked to take the, we're being singled out. I get it, I'm not the finance manager, though, so I don't, I, I think, other things keep me awake at night. But I like the idea of, we're, we're at a critical juncture, it appears, and to codify this. So as I understand it, COG would not be making a decision for us on this particular, in, in regards to our staying with the Planning Commission, but they're looking, we would be asked to be coming up with a procedure for any municipality withdrawing from any of the services, be it library, or planning, or can we withdraw from COG? I don't know. And I think that's important to have. We are maybe taking the brunt of it if, if we agree to, if we listen to your plea, Jim, that this is more than about Patton Township, and I get it, and I don't want this to fall on the backs of our citizens or on the backs of our staff, more importantly. But I am willing to, I personally would be willing to give you the benefit of the doubt and to believe that you would find a planner by February, if not by January, or March, or whatever, maybe said that backwards, so that's where I'm, I'm focusing on the procedure. Sorry, guys.
One idea I have is that if we are going to be an exception, there's no one time in which you become an exception. Maybe the thing to do would be to not withdraw immediately and not say we're withdrawing immediately, but want it to be known that if we somehow do not get some new people onboard by the middle of the year, that we may at that point decide to be an exception, but not to do it now. In other words, let the new director have some leeway that, okay, the full thing is here. You're not, you're not sort of under the gun that you have to hire these people immediately, but let's get started on it. And we would have the faith that in the middle of the year or shortly thereafter, these people would be there, and then it would be unnecessary for us to have done this. It's something we don't know. But- But we could, we could stay in now and just not say anything, but be, if we have to be an exception.
With all due respect, I mean, we're already forecasting our intention, and I think that still wouldn't, that would go against what COG is sort of like advocating for right now, and is that regardless, they don't want us pulling out halfway in the year, whether or not we're forecasting, whether or not we create our little ordinance now that we're gonna do so or not. Like, I think they're saying that we, they don't want us to do that anyway, so that's why I wouldn't really be in favor in saying, well, let's just not do anything halfway through, let's then say, we haven't gotten our services, all right, we're out.
Maybe the discussion back to the COG, right? So, next week, you're gonna act on the ordinance, you're gonna have the public hearing and act on the ordinance to withdraw 2025, right? And that just gives your intent. So, if they hire the best land use planner we've ever seen, or they hire a land use planner that's really good, and you guys decide, nope, we're gonna stay in, we can withdraw that ordinance at some point during 2024, so you can stay in in 2025. But maybe the conversation back to the Executive Committee, the Finance Committee on the Budget is, you know, we have concerns about the staffing, and we would like to see the Executive Committee look at this, and look at how, because it's, again, it's not just us, it's Harris and Half Moon also that have the same issue, but maybe look at some kind of relief for members of the local planning program if staffing levels aren't able to be, you know, brought up to speed by the middle of the year. And then put the onus back on the COG to address it, right? There's not, the Articles of Agreement are completely silent on what happens if the COG is unable to fulfill the service that you're paying for. So, this would be saying, you need to come up with a procedure, going back to Betsy's discussion, you need to come up with a procedure that would look at this. So that gives the onus back to the COG to come up with a way to address this. And again, and then it's a moot point if the new director comes in and he finds two great local planners, or three great, great local planners, and local planning is a, is a great program again. But the other thing this also gives the COG the ability to do is, they have the ability then to say, you know what? We're able to find people that are amazing regional planners, and that keeps our regional partners, the three municipalities that are only in that, really happy. So maybe we're just gonna pivot away from local planning altogether. And they don't have, they don't have a way for that to happen either in the Articles of Agreement. So, maybe you put the discussion back on the Executive Committee, and ask them, or the Finance Committee, or whoever does the bylaws, ask them to look at this and consider this conundrum that the three of us find ourselves in. And that would address the procedure question.
And I'd like to also remind everyone that we also are COG, so the elected officials. So, I know that there's, we can differentiate between staff and elected, but I would like to see.
I could bring something up, that, an intended action, or something like that, and nobody could agree to it.
What?
Well, you're saying, let's have the Executive Committee bring this up and look for a solution. I'm just one member of the Executive Committee.
Well, I think she's saying, let's, let's try and find a procedure, rather than, that applies to everybody universally, and let's all work on it together.
I think that's what we should do.
And that could be your comment on the budget back, right, on this section of the budget.
Thank you. My question is, you have two major players. You have Dan Trevino on the finance, and you have our Chair, Elliot, on the Executive Board. And I think their input is major in this decision. Although it's a committee decision, but we, Patton Township, has our representatives sitting right here. And I think their input to all of this, and with our finance director, has the answer. That we, we're not back and forth, back and forth. And to Jim, I wanna say thank, congratulations. Thank you for all your hard work in retirement. But we've already talked to our solicitor. I think this board is extraordinary, that we can't come up with a solution that will benefit all. Time, as I'm looking, we're staying six months down the line, and I think, if I'm not mistaken, I'm moving into that chair.
Yes.
So, I will be the one looking toward my board, and our representative who are on these committees to bring it back. I know I'm gonna be stepping into the finance, so I'll be working with our Director of Finance. But to keep back and forth, back and forth, you've got two major players here. And I think we should be listening, not only to Jim May from COG, and the Executive Director, Eric, but also to our Director of Finance, and to our representative who are on these major boards, finance, executive board. We can come up with a solution. I think when we made the decision that we made, we didn't know that the candidate for planning was in the works, that was this close to being hired. But even that is coming down the line. So, I would like to just take a moment with this board and see what we can come up with. The answer's here, it really is. And what our decision is, whether to stay, or to come out of it. It's a trickle offense that's gonna happen regardless of what we do. So, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, quickly, so it seems like, I was thinking that this ordinance that we're gonna be talking about in two weeks was for only six months, but it's actually for a year?
It's for 2025.
Okay, and so, we're not actually gonna be getting out halfway through?
Right now, we are, we're committed for all of 2024. There's no provision for us to leave six months through. That was the discussion piece we had with the managers to explore further, and that was not, we're hearing that that's probably not possible from the Executive Director and the Planning Director's side.
Sorry, say that again?
So we had asked at the managers' meeting that the six month scenario be discussed, right? And I had actually told Dan about this ahead of time, and we had asked that it be looked at, and see if we could just see if the numbers worked, and then that proposal was, to my knowledge, not looked at. We didn't see anything back, and we're hearing tonight that they don't think it's feasible, and they have concerns about, staff has some concerns about what it would mean to the other agencies within COG, which is a valid concern.
And so, the six months would have been, so we would have had to actually do a new ordinance anyway?
There would have had to have been some kind of either exception made, like they did with College Township back in 2019, or there would have had to have been some kind of an amendment to the COG Articles of Agreement to speak to this particular situation.
And so, it seems like there's gonna need to be amendment to the COG Articles of Agreement anyway to clarify expectations for how much notice. And so, that's a situation we don't need to figure out right now, that can happen here soon, but not right now. But really, we could still agree to crafting this ordinance, voting on it to get out within.
Yeah, we already did the ordinance, so you talked about that at your meeting in October.
And so, we're voting in two?
You're voting next week on that ordinance, and that just gives your intent to leave January 1, 2025, you can withdraw from that. You can, you can withdraw, State College has done that, they were gonna withdraw from codes years ago, and they withdrew their ordinance halfway through the year because they liked what was happening with codes. It just gives you flexibility, and that's what the idea with the six months was. The paying the full freight for six months would give flexibility. At the time we discussed it, the Planning Director interviews, I think, were just, the second interviews were just being scheduled, so they hadn't happened yet. So, this would just give us flexibility that if the board decided within six months, we don't have a planner, we'd like to move on and do our own thing, just like College Township decided way back when, after their planner left, that would give us the flexibility to be able to leave, right? Right now, that flexibility doesn't exist because the COG Articles of Agreement are completely silent on what happens in this situation. They only talk about if you're unhappy with the program, you give a year's notice, and this is slightly different situation.
What I'm hearing is that, basically, if we decide to stick with a six month thing, we're just adding pressure to the, to a situation which we don't really know the outcome of. The downside is that if nothing happens, and we still don't have a planner, then we're spending money that we could have gotten out of by insisting on a six month thing. But the other thing would be to have, that I think I'm sort of in favor of, is let's have faith that it's going to get solved, and so we'll keep our one year thing there, but not change it. And then, everybody can yell at me, or to anyone else, sometime in July or August, oh, you gotta suspend all this money and then nothing happened. I'll take that risk right now, because there's good people who are thinking of a good solution.
For sure, and, yeah, I'm in agreement, I know that's in disalignment with the manager and director. But yeah, we have our ordinance for a year, intention to withdraw, hopefully services are provided so that we can withdraw that intent, but no, I don't, I don't think we need to pressure all by asking for six months, give us our money back after that, so, yeah.
Do you have anything to say, Jim?
Yeah.
Thank you.
You know, I see, I see both sides, and I understand all the Articles of Agreement, and, you know, I understand, even though we're paying for sixty thousand dollars for a planner, and even if they don't get us a planner at the end of the year, we can get a sixty thousand dollar credit on what we're gonna owe the planning agency for the, for next year. So, I see all that. I guess my, I keep going back to, why am I here? I'm here, I'm representing you, Jim May, as a citizen, you're a taxpayer in Patton Township. I'm representing our taxpayers who live in Patton Township, and my responsibility is fiduciary one. It's my job, and the rest of us too, it's our job to make sure we are stewarding to the best of our ability, our taxpayers' contributions to the services that, as a government, we provide. Some of which the Township provides, some of which the Council of Governments provide, cooperate with other Townships for those services. So what is my fiduciary responsibility in this case? Well, what are we talking about? The amount we're talking about is sixty thousand dollars. And if you pay sixty thousand dollars for a local planner to COG, and you don't get local planning service in 2024, is, is that something that I'm responsible for trying to explain to the taxpayers why we spent sixty thousand dollars and didn't get any service for it, even though it's gonna be future credit? Shouldn't we be keeping that sixty thousand dollars of their money in our Township? And then, and not be having it stored in, in COG to safeguard or to keep? So, I'm struggling with which way to go here. Now, as Amy just explained, we don't have any, we, the board, we have not created a condition. We're talking about a possible condition, and we're getting feedback from Center Region Planning Agency. What kind of hardship that we propose on their own management of their office if we were to actually implement that condition, if they're not able to hire a local planner for us within six months? So, back and forth, back and forth, in my, in my head, I'm kind of, what do you call it, reassociation here, sorry. Taking a lot of time here. I know, I think we've had this discussion enough that it's very clear to Mr. May and, and Mr. Norberg, they can certainly direct the new planning director to view the tape of this, that's been recorded, of all our discussion, so that the new director is very clear, understands very clearly what our concerns are about this. Our responsibility to our taxpayers, and, and actually, Andy and Larry, I thought, were, came up with a, a sort of a compromise, instead of just saying, you don't hire a local planner in three months, we're out, period. No, they're saying, well, you give me six months, and then Larry modified that, saying, well, even after six months, we'll still keep paying the surcharges, so that we can keep covering the, our share of the operating expenses of the office, and not have to impose that kind of burden to be shared by the rest of the municipalities. I don't know that we have to have a vote on this tonight, I don't think we need to, I think we made our, our opinions very clear. We'll have, certainly have a discussion, you can invite the new planner to come in and talk to us in January. Well, I won't be here, but you all can talk to him and continue this discussion, and see what the new planner's forecast is, or how quickly we can find a local planner to hire, to provide the services to the three, the three Townships that have contracted with that office to provide local planning. So, cross my fingers, I know Larry's, best case scenario, it works out, they hire a local planner, we get the service, and we get a good service, and this is all moot. You know, nothing, we're just saying, we'll, we'll keep our contract with COG, with the planning agency, and everything is fine. And we'll cancel the ordinance. So that's what I'm saying, I think we've had enough discussion.
Well, I would just like to add quickly, first of all, I totally respect and agree with your fiduciary duty to the taxpayer. I don't think that it's necessarily limited to a one year plan. So, I thought, my greater fiduciary duty to a taxpayer is to do what I think is right for the, for the long term. And it may mean making a decision that's gonna be a little bit awkward for one year, and having to delay the actual use of that sixty thousand dollars. And meanwhile, we're paying somebody, and it's a little awkward, might end up spending a little bit more money. So, I agree with fiduciary, I don't necessarily agree with the time span. And then second, if, depending what we do, we'll certainly be voting in two, two weeks when we have the public.
Next week.
Next week. And if we vote, just because we have the public hearing, doesn't mean that we're gonna vote the same way that we proposed it on the, on the motion. So I could vote against it, or somebody else could vote against it, or whatever, okay, that. And third, no matter what happens with the vote, I would like to propose that we have our cake and eat it too, that we can do our thing that works for us, but that we implore COG to somehow start the procedure of codifying this, the MOUs that each municipality has with COG, which are the, which are the other five municipalities, so that going forward, we have a procedure that we can follow, so, that's all I'm saying.
So if that's the case, then we would not change the ordinance?
Well, I don't know what you're gonna do, but I know how I'm gonna vote, or how I'm thinking I'm gonna vote. But all I'm saying is that regardless of the vote, that if we implore COG to come up with, or bring us an item before us on the agenda, that we come up with some procedure that will be solid and take us through the future. Right now, we have a procedure, but it does not allow for these exceptions of, you know, what happens if we don't get a planner? We don't, the services aren't delivered, so let's just fill that loophole, that's all I'm saying.
Well, then in that case, it's my job then to implore my colleagues.
Well, then in that case, it's my job then to implore my colleagues to get this started. But I don't want, I'd rather not see anything hanging over their heads that has officially made us an exception if we can wait on that a little bit.
So I'm not quite sure.
So what do you want to wait on, that's my question?
Yeah, what do you, do you want to make a motion?
I don't think we should say anything about a six-month.
Yeah, no.
Then we're going to have to change the motion.
The discussion for you next week is not six months.
Yeah.
The discussion next week is to withdraw January 1, 2025.
Why don't we just leave it at that?
And I think that's what Betsy is saying. We'll leave it at that, and then I think the conversation for Elliot and whoever's on finance is that the COG staff should propose some kind of a codification, something to the Articles of Agreement that looks at the situation we're in now. If the, that creates the official exception to the rule, right? If there's a service that can't be provided, there's a way out, there's some flexibility, because right now it doesn't exist.
Yeah, we're just the test case.
And last thing, so I would say I get that y'all are in a, yes, I agree with Betsy and Dan. The fiduciary responsibility, and Betsy understanding that that stuff needs to occur not only short-term but long-term. And I do agree with honoring that we have a responsibility to make a decision. And sometimes that decision may or may not work out. But I think this also taps into just our integrity of even though things aren't clearly outlined within, you know, these agreements, that, you know, it seems like the expectation has been whatever this year or something like that is. And so I think, again, implementing a plan to try to get out within six months, I think that would have been appreciated, to try to give some flexibility to us. And even though it wasn't, it is what it is. But I think our integrity of not invoking something when it's in disalignment with what, you know, y'all's expectations are, the COG's expectations, just as an integrity, I think it would be important for us to honor whatever the expectations are, and so not to pull out within six months. But yes, I agree with COG trying to codify something, but it seems like if we already have an understanding of what we want to see, and if we are the COG and going to have to be voting on this stuff anyway, why wait for the staff to draft something? Why not us propose something? And they can, we can go back and forth, and then sort of expedite that process. And that, that's all I have. And I will say our interests are aligned, and I understand that there's misalignment given that we're elected representatives and y'all are staff. And so I understand then y'all's fidelity and responsibility to y'all staffing and wanting to protect that. And so I don't, this probably felt adversarial. I feel like I was adversarial. It was really me just trying to understand, and I think I was also adversarial and protective too. And I also can respect, you know, y'all's position.
Well, this is my 42nd year showing this. And it's been a learning, it's a learning experience every year. And I have faith that we're going to solve this problem, and I have no idea if we actually will. But I'd like to give it a shot to see the motion, to believe the proposal that we currently have. And I'd love for the new director to have the leeway to take it, to hold them behind him to make this work.
I appreciate that, and I think, we've been listening, and I know Kim takes great notes, and we've all been trying to pay close attention. One of the things that is typical and would be requested are consensus comments from the board regarding your support for the summary budget generally, but any suggestions or requests for consideration of future processes or procedures. I have been listening, and I hear what you've been saying. Each of the other municipalities, you're the fourth one we've visited with so far, have offered suggestions for how could things be done better in 20, you know, in preparation for the 2025 budget. So I think there will be both comments regarding adoption of this budget, but also notes to be considered for the future. And those will be reviewed by the Finance Committee either in November or December. They have a specific item on the agenda for December to talk about how to do things better in the future. So, you know, your feedback will be taken into consideration along with that of the other townships and the boroughs. So I appreciate the conversation. I know there's a few other things to talk about tonight. So thank you for getting us that far. Thank you, Jim, for all of your participation. And I don't know if there's anything else on the summary budget or if you'd like to talk about or hear from Jim Saylor regarding the MPO request so that that can be considered and we can get your feedback on that as well.
I'd like to hear about the MPO, that request for the additional grant writers. Yeah, just if everybody else does.
It's been spicy, CNET, spicy.
Before he starts, I just need clarification here. The Finance Committee already approved what's in your mind here, this part? Why are we having to discuss it separately?
Yeah, the, due to the, as we're making the final adjustments to get ready to prepare the summary budget to go out to the general forum, there was some balancing that was taking place and some adjustments, and we realized there were some calculation that was in error, so we wanted to make sure that we kept the share adjustment at 10.68%, which was what was shared with the general forum and the Finance Committee. And in order to do that, this was left on the table for consideration as a separate conversation. And so, you know, we didn't, we didn't want to artificially, without the Finance Committee having reviewed, increase the municipal shares once we needed to make that adjustment. So we wanted to bring that back. We consulted with the chair of the Finance Committee to pull out the MPO proposal to keep the municipal shares in balance and have it as a separate item. And that's why we're here tonight, and we've visited with each municipality to say, okay, here's the calculation there in the bottom. We'd like to make sure that everybody's still on board with this proposal as recommended by the Finance Committee. And if so, just make sure we get the indication from each community that they're still in support. And that so far has been positive in each meeting that we've been to so far. But if there are any questions about the proposal, where we are now, Jim can certainly answer those questions.
Again, so the summary budget does not include this part because it hadn't been the actual announced word clarified at the time we had our final...
Correct.
Finance Committee meeting. So the summary budget, so this, what the Finance Committee agreed to was the third part down at the bottom there. So assuming the board here has no problem with incorporating this budget request, Patten Township's contribution will increase by $18,680 to cover our share of this proposal. Do I understand that correctly, Larry? Is that what you did?
That's my understanding, but...
Yeah. So our actual percentage increase over last year might creep up by a tenth of a percent?
Maybe, maybe a hundredth of a percent, yeah.
Just so I understand why we're having to look at this again. I don't know what we need in time. It depends on what, were you just wanting to explain this portion here? Or were you going to go through the whole presentation you made that the Finance Committee, I don't think we need that.
An abbreviated version of that, just to try and catch everybody up. If you're in support of this, I don't need to take you back through that. But if you have questions, I'm happy to answer them.
I have been supportive of it, and we had a very extensive thorough presentation at Finance Committee about why we should be supporting this kind of staffing and consulting to take advantage of...
The funds.
By our...
The funds that are available, yeah, I'm sorry.
Legislation, and it's only, and it only means a small increase in, from the summary budget figure, you know, to us, the cost to us of $18,680 is our share.
And let's get that high-speed line going right through here.
Betsy, do you think? No, I just, I thought you were searching for a word, so I was just going to say the funds. You were looking for the bill, B I L.
Yeah, I missed the rest of your line, some more details about why they're requesting this kind of support and the benefits for us. I don't know, I don't fully agree.
I think I'm good without it, but if you want to summarize it in one or two sentences, you came all the way here, I don't know. And we could talk for another 10 minutes about whether you should or shouldn't. In the meantime, it would take you probably 30 seconds to give us that summary.
Again, so what it comes down to is in February 2022, the MPO Coordinating Committee saw the impacts of the additional funding from Bill and the impact it had in the tip. And they're very cognizant of the fact that 40% of the funding available through the bill is locked up behind discretionary programs. So you have to compete, fill out an application to do that. At a regional level, county-wide, we don't have a process for that. So what came out of that Bill Subcommittee after a seven-month process was direction to staff develop for us a meaningful way to engage with this that you think is likely to create results, to bring some of that 40% funding in. And that's what we did. And we started out with a number that, as we discussed it with the managers, was too large for the resources within the region. So we reduced that with what we took into the budget wrap-up session. That's kind of the middle line of this proposal. Okay, if we cut it back, we still think we can do these things. We got good guidance from the Finance Committee. This is what they can support. Okay, at this bottom line, this is what we can deliver for that. We think is a proof of concept, this is still valuable. It is our path to engaging with these opportunities. And our alternative is to just sit back and watch other areas compete for these funds, some of them successfully, some of them not. If, if we're taking our responsibility for transportation planning seriously, and we want to try to maximize the resources we can bring to the area, this is a reasonable way forward to do it. So that's why we're asking for comments on the summary budget supporting this proposal.
Thanks. Yeah, I think it's great. Thank you.
I would say it's an extra $20,000, and we spent like an hour and a half talking about potentially $60,000 pulling out from that. So I mean, $80,000 if we don't get our planning services.
Couldn't say it's just another example of the high value of transportation.
It's just like, over the years, I have had colleagues who've said that they got dozens and thousands of calls for this, and they're asking for that. And over the whole time, I don't think I've had a certain call for that year. And so food rights are...
Did you need to vote?
Do you have any other comments on, I have your comment that you're supportive of the proposal. Do you have any other comments on the summary budget? Do you just want to say you're supportive of the summary budget?
Do you have a motion that we do?
I don't think you need one necessarily. You'll approve it in December.
Thank you all.
Thank you all for coming and being ready for questions that we didn't have, really, because you've done your homework. It's so good. No, thank you.
I just realized if, like, looking through the budget for like state or federal, like, it would be horrible. Like to be those staff and have to deal with this.
The budget is like this thick? Okay, let's move on.
There's nothing else on the agenda?
Oh, okay, I'd like to make a motion. That we adjourn. Okay. Oh, and...
Aren't there different sections we still have?
Welcome, Susan, but we'll do that officially next time.
Yeah.